A roll call.
Bastin.
Yes.
Bush.
Here.
Dolphin.
Here.
Hay. Kench.
Here.
Stephes.
Here.
Stevenson. Here.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of a minute. We have two sets of minutes, correct?
Yes, correct.
Both?
Both.
Second? Motion by... Second by Jeff to approve both. Any discussion? Your panel in favor say aye. Both? The motion carried. Communications? Board communications received. Okay? All right. Set aside communications. At this time, I'll open the floor to anybody that has a... Concern about... Okay, all right. Moving on. Administrative Business Services Credit Card Statement of Activity and Bill's May of Life. I'd like to approve one together. Any... We have a motion to approve.
I'll move.
A motion by Julie. Do you want to second?
I'll second.
Is that my handy? Any discussion?
The meeting that Luke went to in Louisiana, I thought that was every other year. Was it in the contract?
Yeah, correct. In the contract, it's every other year. And today, this is my sixth year, I've gone to two. So this would be the second one over six years. And that's actually coming up. I haven't gone yet. So that would be coming up March 1, 2, and 3, I believe.
I thought that you went last year.
Was it last year or the year before? I guess it over revolved.
Okay, all right. Is it a national superintendent's meeting?
Yeah, that is the National Superintendent's Conference. This one is specifically of interest because it's on personalized learning, which is part of the strategic plan was to investigate personalized learning. Last year, I attended the state level in Milwaukee. They offered it at the... At some Perry School District's office. And I attended that. That was Jack Baricaba's work and his book on personalized learning. And then this is the National Conference on Personalized Learning. So I will certainly bring back a lot of good information for the board to consider as we continue our journey down that strategic path.
Registration of valid dollars?
Yes.
Well, I'd like to have clarification if, you know, if you can only go every other year. If you went last year, I would think that would make this year's trip invalid.
That would end the last of the two-year cycle. So this would be the first of my next two-year cycle.
It's not the calendar year that it occurs in?
No, it'd be a school year that we operate on.
Any other concerns, questions?
Hey, what's the payment to the Riverdale School District, the $10,000?
That is our part of the matching grant for the telepresence. So we received the Russ DLT grant, which is for telepresence. And we received three units, one which is the SX-10 here that is streaming this meeting live. There is a mobile unit that is dedicated to the middle school. And then there is a DX-80, which is a desktop unit. Those three pieces had a 50% match to that grant, and that was our portion. Riverdale is the fiscal agent for our five-school boost consortium. So each school had a different part to their match depending on the telepresence units that they put in. Some put in hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of equipment, so they had a larger match than we did. Ours was the smallest of all the matches because of the amount of grants that we've already received for telepresence. We've received, I believe it's $125,000 in grants from the Wisconsin Technology Institute to date. So for all the telepresence equipment that we've put in, we've... We had to purchase $10,000 worth of it.
And what does that stand for, Russ?
Russ is the rural... DLT is the Distance Telepresence. But the... It's an act of, for an agency of a federal... So it's a federal grant.
So you're saying we're receiving a lot more value than the $10,000 of what we're paying?
Correct, yes.
The other question I have is the $60,000 for the stadium seats?
Yep.
I assume there's $60,000 that has come into the district from...
That is correct.
Somebody?
Yes, there's been fundraising efforts, corporate donors, individual donors, fundraising efforts that have compiled the entire cost to purchase bleachers for the stadium. And the next project, and we're just very close to also securing a press box for the stadium. All of those dollars are secured and accounted for through a fundraising account, Fund 21. And then those dollars are then expensed out of that same funding account. So it's a clear way of tracking and auditing the money that comes in and the checks and where the money comes from. And then also the expenditures going out to make a clear separation from any operational monies.
So has money come into the district from the Gridiron Club in the amount of $60,000 to cover the bleachers?
Not just the Gridiron. The Gridiron did make a donation at our last meeting for $17,000. But there's been other private donations, corporate donations, fundraising dollars that have been deposited to that account in excess of $60,000.
How much of our loan have they used, you know?
That has been exhausted.
That's your guy.
Yes.
Now, I think we should have an accounting of that because that's... One of the most asked questions is the accounting of the money going to the football field.
I did reply to that. You had that question last meeting. And I did send that out by email to the board because that's exactly what that account is for. So you can see all of the deposits made and then all the expenditures made. So you have a clear accounting and a funding code for all of the revenue and expenditures. That's easily provided. Marcia keeps that all off to the side. And I can give you hard copies even tonight before you leave if you'd like.
Can you go back three years and get it?
Absolutely.
I'd like to have that.
Do you want me to read that spreadsheet that I...
If they feel it's... If they'd like it. Angie keeps an internal spreadsheet as well as the Skyward version where we account for it in our accounting system. But Angie also keeps an internal ledger. So any money that comes through the district flows first through Angie. She makes the deposit. And then when the expenditures are needed to be made, I give the authorization to Marcia to release the funds out of that same account that it's deposited to. So if you'd be interested in that internal ledger or spreadsheet, we can make copies of that for you as well. Everything is very transparent. So you can see all of the money raised and spent.
What do we spend so far? $500,000?
In addition to $500,000, I think total, correct. The bleacher project will put us over that halfway mark, for sure.
The halfway mark means what?
To project completion.
Oh, okay. Well, to that project, yeah.
No, the entire project. We're more than halfway of fundraising the entire project.
We had one including baseball field. Not to our overall project, but one.
Correct, right. But that's not part of this. This is the stadium only as it resides out here. So after the bleachers and the press box, you'll see activity out there. The last week of March will start staging the equipment, dropping off the bleacher material. And then that will go up the last week of March, the first week of April. The bleachers will be starting to be assembled. The press box will be placed on the top. And then there's lights, which are roughly $150,000. Fencing, which is roughly $21,000. And then a concession stand that will do more of a design build through, hopefully, Mr. Carey's classes as a project so we can build in some educational components to that building.
Is there an electronic version of the spreadsheet that you could phone?
Absolutely.
Okay, that'd be great.
Angie will give you a copy if you want to get it till she brings that back. That $60,000, one more time. The donations that were coming in outside of the Gridiron Club were geared toward the stadium, correctly?
Correct. The Gridiron Club's donation of $17,000 was one part of that 60. And that 60 is just one partial payment of the entire bleacher project, which was roughly $200,000. I believe there's a payment last month of, I believe it was $40,000 or $60,000, which was a partial payment. So there's four, I think, total payments in this as they stage through the process. And in order to materials, start to assemble the bleachers, fabricate them, assemble them here. And then the final payment will be due upon completion.
Does it show on our... Had a ledger, though, did they?
They should have. Yes, they would have been in the ledger as well. All of the payments starting in December. Yeah, it would be under the same designation of JDI bleachers. So if you were to pull up the last month's packet, you would see another expenditure for JDI.
Around $40,000?
Around $40,000 to $60,000, correct.
What is the CW, the CDW government?
That is an actual technology sales company. So you purchase hardware equipment from CDW. The exact expenditure, I can look up for you if you'd like.
And what about Dependable Solutions?
That is our technology support. So that would be people coming into both buildings to do onsite maintenance and upgrade still technology.
And we're under contract. Do they charge us a monthly fee?
With Dependable, you're saying?
Yeah.
We do not have a contract. It's a handshake. They are monthly. They invoice us for the work. They give us a full disclosure of who's been onsite, what tickets they've billed. We have a ticket system that goes through our email. And they will show us who was serviced and what was completed. And then they bill us for the hours. And the nice part about their company is if they need low-level technological support, it's a printer issue, they bring in their lowest-level caseworker to work on that project. If they need something like a server is not working correctly, then they bring in somebody that is appropriately able to handle that. So we're not always paying a premium for easy tickets. And we're not getting somebody that doesn't have the knowledge to spend a lot of time trying to fix something that requires some expertise, so.
What about... Is it typically there'll be like one person onsite? Or sometimes are there two people here or what? And I'm asking because I wonder if at some point it would make more sense to hire somebody and have somebody here in-house rather than paying them on a monthly basis.
Yep. We have roughly three to four people that will be onsite. Jason is what I consider our primary person that's dealing with most of the medium-grade tickets. Sometimes when they do mass deployment, especially in the summer, or if there's a winter break where they're doing an upgrade to an operating system, they'll bring in Rachel. And sometimes a third hand from another school district that will just help to knock out 100 computers in a couple hours rather than one person doing all 100 computers over three hours. So there's that economy that they can pull in extra resources. And then BJ and Joe are the other two that are more on the level of expertise that would come in and work on the main core server or closet switches. They're the ones that are working with connecting the WISNEC, mostly our wireless pieces. They're going to be the ones that are working on that backend to try to make sure that it works well. Much of what they do, they do not have to physically be onsite. They can remote in. And they have access to all of our systems, so they can take care of a lot of this offsite. We certainly could look at an independent person. That's what we had when I first arrived. That person then resigned. And we didn't find somebody right away because it is a large district. And we have probably increased our technological needs by tenfold since we first arrived. I arrived six years ago, which is going to a one-to-one initiative. Map reversing and telepresence were now fully wireless. These are things that just weren't in our building. So I think you'd be saturated. Probably want to look at... Long salary and benefits. Not sure one person could handle all of the needs. What might be helpful for you is to see the number of tickets that the Group Dependable Solutions completes in a month or even a year to date. If you remember, I sent it out last year, and it was close to 60, 70 pages of just nonstop tickets that they were... That would be exhausting for one person. And then that one person, technically, even though they're salaried, usually brings in a finite amount of expertise, either on the high end or the low end, but not necessarily being able to diversify. So we'd certainly be open to looking at it if you were interested.
Through the budget process, I think it'd be a good idea at least to bring it back to the board and show us what we spent, what left, and what we used them.
Sure.
And what a potential employee request.
Okay.
We could get in the top of bills every month. And they actually are running lower than they were a year ago. So I'm assuming the numbers must be down a little bit. When are we going to see something for revenue?
I met with Lisa Carrero and Nancy, our food service director, right before Christmas break. They broke down the meal count for me. They broke down the revenue. They broke down the expenditures. They're slightly behind their anticipated revenues. And they're slightly ahead of their anticipated expenditures. So they are about where they wanted to be, a little bit off, but they're not concerned. There's a lot of... The bulk of the year when people are inside is still January, February, and March, where we can't really go out and spend time outside of the building having lunch. So they project to finish right about where they projected to be. And I certainly can share that report with you as well.
Is there... We were just handed the donations for the stadium project. Is there another document that shows the payments that have been made on the loan and what the obligations are for the stadium project?
On the loan itself, the $250,000 that was taken out two years ago? There is no more expenditures because that loan has been totally exhausted. So it would just be making payments to that. Yes, we could show you the payments that are being made. And that's a gift again annually through the alumni fundraiser. So that money comes in and is deposited and actually pays down the note, so.
How about a list of expenditures?
There is no expenditures other than the remaining balance that was left. If you remember, the first part of that note was to do a lot of the curb, the gutter, the infrastructure, and the irrigation scoreboard, those kinds of things. The wiring to the scoreboard. The scoreboard was donated by the former savings. Then there was only a small balance of about $10,000 left that it carried for the last two years. And then we just, on the bleacher project, we spent the rest of that $10,000 down. I think you'll find that money will be quoted in December, I believe, was when that expenditure was totally exhausted, the note. And now there's just no other expenditures to show.
Look, you reckon somewhere Luke have paid out? The guy digging and the guy sweating and all that. Do you have a record to that somewhere?
Of who?
Expenses?
Yes.
That's what I'm aware of.
Yep. That would be on Marcia's expenditure sheet. Angie gets the revenue coming through hers. So that's... You're seeing the revenue side?
She don't see anything going off?
No, no. That comes from Marcia's report. I have a hard copy in my office. We could make a quick copy of that as well. It's right behind my chair in the wire basket of Fund 21.
Look back like three years?
That would be this year. We would have to give Marcia to run a report to go back years two and three.
Let's not get this one.
So to date, $264,000 has been raised? Or is it $264,000 plus the 27?
Yes, that would be an all-in number. But then much of that has been obviously expensed. So that's not our net balance. But that's just money that's been raised to date. From the time that Angie began keeping track of her spreadsheet. If you were to look at the entire amount of donations received to date, and you have to look at it not just being monetary, but a lot of them were in the form of in-kind donations, where they would donate gravel or they would donate time and material, over $450,000 has been raised to date. And with the bleacher project, that'll put us closer to... Closer to about $550,000 to $600,000 has been raised to the stadium with roughly $200,000 to go.
Which is hard for me to determine based on this document, whether the $60,000 that is in this expense report is available.
Yeah, you'll be able to see that as a running total on Marcia's expenditure sheet, which is coming from Angie in minutes when she wants a copy.
Well, what is common core flip? Is that flipping it back to uncommon core?
Which page do you reference, you glad?
It was on the additional ones.
Is that the name of the vendor?
I think it was a description.
A broad help.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, these are flipbooks for grades K 2, 3, 4, 5. So it's elementary purchase. And this, if I understand the flipbooks correctly, this purchase is the actual common core that is condensed in a book that flips quickly so that you have the expectations, the standard, the outcome available for you in a quick and easy manner without having to pull up the computer, go online, download either the language arts or the math. It's all here in one quick place where you can find those common core expectations and standards. This was actually purchased out of Fund 27, which means it was for the special education department. Full $2,000 were used to help with that expenditure.
So the $60,000 would be at the bottom of this, then?
Correct. That would be one of the most recent reductions here. You can see the $40,000 is in the month of December or January is the $40,000. You'll see the 10... Let's see, where was the... $10,000, 8, 9, 15 was back in, I think that was September. That was the remaining... I'm sorry, that wouldn't have come out of this fund. So you won't see the $10,000 now because that's a Fund 40. The note is, this is just all Fund 21 expenditures and revenues. So you're seeing both here as a running total on the right-hand side. So if you go back to the top, when we started our fiscal year, July 1, we had $89,000 in the account. It reached its highest point at $189,974 on January 9. We're starting to make withdrawals from that for the bleacher project. And we're now sitting up before the $60,000 expenditure at $152,000, less $60,000, which is right around $90,000.
The bleachers are paid for now, Luke?
Correct.
$60,000 and the $40,000?
I hope there'll be another payment yet of, I believe, the total project was $200,000.
To level with what they had.
Correct.
And then the lights and the fence and the concession stand forthcoming with...
That's forthcoming. That is ongoing fundraising efforts. Roughly budgeted $150,000 to finish the lights. Those are partially installed. The bases are in. This would be the actual light poles and standards. The fencing, we're working with Chris Fence, one of the most local contractors here out of Darlington, to upgrade their port from two years ago when they first met. As we're getting closer to installing fencing. And then the concession stand, again, as a design build, we have a put-in number on that.
Can clarify, the lights are approximately $150,000.
Correct, yep.
The fencing is $21,000.
Correct.
And the concession stand?
To be determined.
Should be determined.
Depending on material and type and size.
All right. How about the press box? Where does that fit in?
The press box is roughly a $60,000 item. We will finish that using in-kind donations. So that would be the engineering, the platform, and the shell along with windows and doors and so forth. That is part of the bleacher project that it would be in addition to. So let's not go through this yet. We're just making fundraisers for the current.
Please your question answered.
So Marshall has it from day one?
Absolutely.
Just like this?
Yep.
So we can see this going back to 2013? This doesn't show any payments on the loan?
Correct. Because this is the gift account. The loan payments would be out of Fund 40. So when we make withdrawals and expenditures... Well, the note, the balance of the note came into Fund 40. And then the expenditures are made out of Fund 40, which is a segregated fund for capital projects specifically that have been financed under the terms of a note. Fund 21 by DPI rule has to be designated as for gifts or fundraising efforts for a specific project. It can't just be a general account that collects money. It has to be designated for a specific project, this being the stadium project, which you'll see on the header of the stadium. So all of this money is easily tracked in a Fund 21, which has to be separate by DPI rule and auditing purposes from the note.
The payments out of Fund 40 on the note, are they coming from the private donations?
Those are coming directly from the alumni fundraising efforts. And they get donated directly into Fund 40 in order to make that note payment.
That note went directly to the bank. All of that note out of Fund 40?
Correct, yes.
So can we also see the printout of Fund 40 showing all of that?
I think, are we gonna... Well, this can be an agenda topic. I mean, I feel like it probably could live outside of the bill's payable, right? So we could have it in case there was discussion that the community wanted to come, so we have it. And I don't know if it would be worthwhile, because it is kind of convoluted depending on the accounts, if there's some sort of, you know, executive summary on the front to help people understand what they're seeing. Because I think, you know, the mistrust and the transparency around this is an ongoing concern like one mentioned. So if we have just something that makes it very clear, it will be helpful.
It seems to have picked up weight in some reason. I don't know why. It's time of the year, I think, and the...
The expenses picked up there?
People are asking about it, yeah.
It might have to do with the damage outside of school.
There's more. Yeah, I think that's how to do it.
That might be part of the two of these things. I've never did before.
People are getting psyched up for football.
That's right.
So maybe on the item for the March meeting?
No.
Yep. Any other questions on bills payable or credit card? We have a motion and second. Roll call.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Bastin?
Stine.
Bush?
Yes.
Dolphin? Hay? Kench?
Stanage.
Stephes?
Yes. Motion. So we are going to move from this, if it's okay with the board. Jenny Wallen is here to discuss the Spanish trip with us. Marcia and I.
It'll be found on page 48 of your packet of your supporting materials. Welcome, Ms. Wallen.
Hi, I'm Jenny Wallen. I haven't met Oliver yet before. I am a Spanish teacher here. This is my second year. And last year, we took a trip to Mexico with five students. One of them was unable to join us for medical reasons. And we're looking forward to hopefully doing another trip, not this summer, but in 2018. So this is a proposal. You have the sheet in your packet that shows the actual itinerary of the trip, going to Costa Rica. And the students chose this as the trip that they would like to go on. Some of the information that you need as a board regarding costs incurred by the district. There is no cost incurred by the district. The students pay for it themselves. We do have fundraising activities that we can do. There... It's outside of school, so you don't need to hire a sub. And as far as the 10 to 1 student teacher chaperone, the travel company requires 6 to 1, so it's even better. As far as educational activities, I've got them listed here for you: language, immersion, reading, listening, speaking the native language. In this particular trip, we visit a rainforest. It's preferable to reading about it in a textbook or online. They can actually experience it firsthand. We have three farm-to-table experiences: pineapple plantation, chocolate plantation, and a coffee plantation that we start actually at the plantation, go through the whole process all the way up until it's delivered to the market. And with this travel company, it's called Interact, out of Green Bay, Wisconsin. I've used it before with other student travels, specifically student travel oriented. And one of the components to their trip is that they always have a humanitarian angle. So for a couple hours on one of the days during the trip, we go to visit orphanage in the area. And the kids get to play with the orphans. We weren't allowed to bring back pictures because they don't allow that for privacy reasons. But the kids actually... I wasn't sure how they received that. And that was one of the things they really thought was neat. I wrote down some of the things. I asked the kids, what are some of the things you want the school board to know about your trip last year that might, you know, give them an idea of what you've learned on this as far as educational experiences and just life experiences? They liked the exposure to the world outside of Wisconsin, Mineral Point, the US. They liked to experience culture up close instead of just reading about it in class, dancing, climbing pyramids, snorkeling in the coral reefs, new foods. They learned about the history of the Aztec Indians and visited their ruins. They wanted to make sure I told you that you used a lot of math for converting dollars to pesos. They thought it was interesting to hear what the Mexicans had to say about their culture from their point of view. And they learned a lot of Spanish by listening and speaking. We were in a lot of touristy areas, so they didn't have to use as much Spanish as I would have liked. But that's just how it goes. They talked about the orphanage and realized how lucky they are to live in the US and not take anything for granted, their families and everything. They learned to be flexible because we had a little issue at the airport. We had mechanical problems on the airplane. We had mechanical problems on the airplane and we couldn't get down there right away. So we all had to kind of buck up and come together and they were great. And the travel company, I've traveled with them before, like I said, I've never had any kind of issue with travel and this is the first time and it was great. They contacted us, they had everything, they had a person ready on the ground to meet us, take care of everything. So, you know, considering all the logistics with traveling with the group, it was awesome. And the one, the last, very last sentence on the sheet, they want to make sure you knew that they do not serve chips and salsa restaurants in Mexico. They thought that was hilarious, so. But anyway, so that's, so you can see the travel itinerary, it's got the map on there of Costa Rica and so we're just looking for approval, tentative approval for that trip.
What's the cost for the kids?
Right now, the cost for 2018 will come out tomorrow. This year's trip for this summer is $2,095. The trip that we took last year to Mexico, this year is actually about $50 less, so I'm not really sure, you know, they don't change too much.
Do they get a break on their pass rate?
No, no.
How many would you go on about?
Well, a lot of kids say they want to go and then they have to come up with the money. You know, it's a different story, but we wanted to get this approved ahead of time so that we can start fundraising and have a goal.
In the past, how much have you fundraised for kids this year?
Well, here at Mineral Point, I haven't done any fundraising because our trip last year was kind of last minute and I wasn't planning on doing it my first year here. And also, we're trying to keep it opposite of Cornwall. So some of the fundraisers that we've talked about doing are selling actually coffee from Costa Rica because, you know, it has a tie to the trip. And also, there's another kind of, kind of like a matchmaking thing that they can, students can opt in or opt out of and that's no cost at all fundraising. It's completely profit, 100% profit, so. Those are some of the things. They want to do car washes and other things, but we'll just wait and see.
What do you mean matchmaking?
Haven't you heard of that before? Okay, so they fill out a survey, like who would be a good friend for you? Are you in band? Are you in sports, you know? And then they fill it out. And if they want to know what their results are, they can pay $5 and get the results. Have you heard of that before? They do it in a lot of schools.
We did that when I was in school.
We did that, that was.
Yeah.
Is Spanish the major language there then?
Mm-hmm, it is.
Okay, because I know there are no indigenous natives in that area, everybody's an immigrant, so.
Will there be 50 kids?
I hope there be 50 kids, I doubt it. So it's every six students that we can invite and I'd like to have a teacher go or a well-traveled parent.
How about lazy old school board?
Sure.
And go check to see if they're on when you come back.
We can work on that, definitely.
Your fundraiser can't raise this very...
Oh, absolutely not, no, the kids know that. So that's why we'd kind of like to start out early. Like I said, the prices for 2018 come out tomorrow, February 14. And there's also an early bird discount if we can get going right away. I can't remember if the discount goes at the end of March or something like that.
What's the classes, what years, like all four?
Yeah, so I like them to have at least two years of Spanish. And some kids who have already finished their Spanish, let's say they've done three years, but they're not in it this year, said, hey, can we still go? Or, you know, I said, you know, as long as you have two years of Spanish, I'm fine with it.
I moved it, we approve it.
We have a motion and a second. We will have a, any other discussion?
Well, my son just went there last year and he thought it was a very nice place.
They'll also be like a beach type, you know, they always want to fit that in with the education. We got to have something to lure them in.
Yeah, there's, it's a different variety of, oh, what am I trying to say here? You've got tropical rainforest, you've got temperate areas, you've got all different kinds of...
Did you go out on the islands? There's an island out there.
Yeah, it's, it's different. This is like five or six different countries almost.
Safety of it pretty good?
Pardon?
Safety of it pretty good now?
Yeah, it is, it's pretty safe. And this company, like I said, I've traveled with them for, this is my 14th year teaching and I started in probably 91, working with them and have had no problems, they haven't had any major problems. Last year, everybody was concerned about Zika, that was in the news and we just told the kids, keep a lot of bug spray on and everybody was fine.
So last year, you used this company to go to Mexico?
Mm-hmm, yep. And it's a Wisconsin company, which is kind of nice too, it's not in Green Bay, so.
All right. The only thing I ask, and maybe I asked last year, is just make sure that our insurance company endorsed this.
And I know that was checked on last year and it's fine, yeah.
All right. So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Do a roll call, Angie.
Hay?
Yes.
Kench?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Bastin?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dolphin?
Yeah.
Staffes?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you!
Moving back to items for information, the school safety committee.
We skipped the budget.
Yeah, we're going to go back to the, back to the beginning where information and discussion is going. That was some reactions. Counting forward to the back to the side.
That's okay. Financial budget update.
I just shared with the board a little information as we start to get some initial glimpses of the state budget and what that means for possibly Mineral Point as we look at the next two years. And I think I would start with a caveat of the governor's proposal is just that, it's a budget proposal, it's not the budget. It will have to go through many iterations through the joint finance committee. It will be vetted by both houses and somewhere between as early as July and as late as October, they fiscally have to approve a budget by state statute. So there will be a lot of trade-offs and a lot of give and takes, but I wanted to share a little bit about what I could share at this time. First is that there's a $509 million public school aid that would be spent, $200 per pupil increase in the first year, $204 increase in the second year. This is scheduled to go through the state's general aid formula and I think there's a really important piece for the board to understand. And if I could bring the entire district budget down to a $100 bill, right now, $50 of that bill is supported by local taxpayers and the other $50 of our $100 bill is supported by our state through the form of state aid and the equalized aid formula. If the governor is generous and is going to give us an extra $10 this year, so we're going to have $110 next year to work with, the misnomer that I think people aren't understanding is that it's underneath the revenue cap when it goes through the general aid formula. So what that essentially means is that we have $60 coming from the state and the local property taxpayers will only pay $40. So we really don't have $110 to spend, we still only have $100 to spend because we're underneath the revenue limit. So when we look forward, it sounds wonderful that he's giving all this money to schools, it's not usable money in the sense that it will reduce local taxpayers' burdens, but it will not be any additional funding for our schools. There is some other categorical aid that I'll allude to later that we would be eligible for, but this is really a pass-through and it doesn't help us. And in fact, with our declining enrollment of roughly about 50 kids since 2011 when I arrived, at roughly $10,000 per kid, that's actually $500,000 less of revenue that we have coming in from the state in the form of, with the way to educate kids. So that's why we've been challenged is declining enrollment and the $509 million that he's putting in was offset by a $600 million cut in 2010 and 11 as a form of Act 32. So this is really bringing us back to 2009, 10, 11 time period. We're roughly running with the same amount of revenue as we did back then. Obviously, things cost more, much more in 2016, 17 and 17, 18. The other pieces to this is that, again, with the revenue cap, it doesn't really help us. There's a small increase for voucher schools, that's not going to help us at all. Another commitment to try to come back up to two-thirds funding, that again is a pass-through, so that's not going to be new money for us to work with to actually try to cover benefit increases or salary increases or instructional needs. As we move down to the next area, it's for Milwaukee schools to encourage them to approve. We will not see any of that aid. There is money for Milwaukee public schools, we will not see any of that aid. There is some money for mental health, there's $3 million that are going to be put out there for social workers to help. A lot of this is going to be in charter schools as well as independent public schools. That money though, when you spread it across the district, will not translate to much. It's not going to buy us a social worker in Mineral Point. It might give us $500 to bring in somebody for a day to help us with social well-being, but it's not going to certainly support us on any level. The $7.6 million to help students in districts connect disabled students with jobs, that could potentially reap some benefits for our district on some level, but again, $7.6 million across the entire state is relatively a small number. There is an anti-bullying effort that is out there for $300,000. A lot of these are also in the form of grants, so you're going to have to write a grant for it, it's not guaranteed money. And if you do get the grant, it oftentimes comes with many stipulations that for the $1,500 or $2,500, it's not worth the hassle to apply for the grant. So we've had that happen on a couple of occasions. If we look at the rural schools proposal, this is more in the form of actual categorical aid, so this does not pass through. This is something that's being targeted specifically for rural schools to try to help with their struggling needs. As we know, declining enrollment is a problem in rural Wisconsin. We also know that we have a larger area to transport kids, so transportation costs are just naturally higher than in suburban and urban areas. There is a categorical aid that I do anticipate if it goes through the process and it is approved, it might help us. That's the increasing per pupil for sparsity aid. Right now, we currently get about $300 per pupil that we have because we're in a very sparse rural area. Spars being less than 10 students per square mile. That is right now being projected to go up to $400 per student. That would translate to about $70,000 in new money for us that would be able to be used and spent. That wouldn't necessarily even cover a small increase in benefits though. That's, that's the trade-off is a 1% or 2% increase in our benefit costs would all but eat that up and then some. There's a lot of other things that we just simply don't qualify for. There is a, an effort to help with categorical aid for rural schools that transport students long distances, it's transportation aid. We would not qualify for that because in order to qualify, your expenditures in transportation have to be above 150% over the state average. And we are currently under the state average of what we expend for transportation. So it's good news in that we are under the state average, we don't overspend in transportation, but that doesn't help us in the form of transportation aid, so we wouldn't qualify for that particular aid. Over the two-year, there's again a possible $46,000 that might come up in another reimbursement form of transportation. And then there's a couple of grants around broadband, technology, training and what was the last one? The University of Wisconsin, flexible option. This is to help paraprofessionals become certified teachers to try to help with the teacher shortage. What I do know is that a lot of the state aid at the top, when this first came out, wasn't fully vetted, but now that people are starting to get their heads around this, it needs to be tied to compliance with Act 10, which means in order to get the $509 million, a school district or any part of that through the equalized aid, a school district would have to show that their employees are paying 12% of their health insurance. And currently, we've been paying 12% prior to my arrival, the employees have been paying 12%. So that's where, when Act 10 happened, we couldn't then apply the 12% because we were already paying it. So when you talk about the tools, the toolbox to help mitigate some of those losses, we had already expended that tool up. So we will be compliant and have any compliance, in fact, the last two years, the teaching staff has paid more than 12%. The other thing that I understand to be true is that this funding source is tied to the governor's proposal that we move to a state insurance plan. That state insurance plan would basically collapse a lot of the insurance companies in pockets throughout the state into one state plan. And that those savings, which are debatable, the governor says about 60 million, some are suggesting it might actually cost the state money and everything in between would be part of the money that we use to fund this proposal. Senator Fitzgerald has been not very supportive of that in its early stages because it will cost many people across multiple smaller insurance companies jobs. And to lose jobs for one state plan doesn't seem to pass muster with Mr. Fitzgerald. So that will have to be hashed out over time between those two parties. The last thing I would share is just overall through Senator or through Representative Fitzgerald and Representative Boss, there are areas where the governor's budget and what Fitzgerald and Boss believe are going to be the ultimate budgets have some impasses that they'll have to work through, not just in education, but around transportation, some of these other areas. Representative Boss suggested that the budget might not be figured out till October because there are significant differences in their party about how to proceed. So the best I can say is stay tuned, be patient. We will continue to put together our budget with multiple scenarios, given the best, latest and greatest information, but this will change rapidly in April, May and June and then again, July, August and September. And we may not know the final number of what we're going to have to work with until potentially October. If it should happen and it goes into or past July 1, which is our new fiscal year, there is a state statute that states that the current biannual budget carries forward until the finalized budget. So we would have a tentative plan and funding sources to carry us through from July and possibly October, but we wouldn't be able to really do any significant budgeting with certainty until we know the budget is final at the state level. Can I clarify anything?
Have you heard anything, Luke, on the per pupil? We estimated $200 per pupil in the cap raise. Have you heard anything on that, Angie?
Nothing on the cap raise. I did not hear anybody say that any of those dollars will be above the cap. I think when school districts start to push back with their local representatives, that's where through the joint finance committee, and this is what happened the last biennial, is there wasn't any dollars above the cap and then it became a slight increase of 75 and 150, or 75 twice over two years. That might happen again because there's really no new dollars. So obviously, everything next year is going to cost more than it did this year and with no real increase in revenue that's tangible that we can use, schools will be forced to make reductions. And that's just across the state, not in Mineral Point.
Well, 20 years ago, I had some people ask me, would be able to afford to pay for the school? I told them, be able to pay for the school, it's a finite number. But I said, within 20 years and before 20 years, I think we will have a very hard time operating it because we're going to have declining enrollment and we're going to have increasing costs and we're going to have a number of students, which is not work out the best for doing all your classes and so on and so forth.
I had time down here, but I, any other questions on the budget before we go to the infographic?
What do we have to do to enroll now? Do we know the number?
Yes, we do. Our third Friday count in January was up one student, down one student. It stayed relatively flat in January. We weren't prepared to talk to it tonight, but we can do an update for you at our next board meeting. But relatively flat, it was like a student FTE one way or the other, I can't recall.
Too many numbers, it's on my desk, I can grab it.
It's under the 745.
Oh, yeah.
What, what are the numbers? Supporting, is it the, I'm sorry, whatever.
No, I was just clarifying the number. FTE is...
Is it the state number that they use for the, or is it the actual number of people?
Full-time equivalency.
Yeah, but what's the actual number of people? I'd like to know that.
Yeah, we...
I can grab that now.
Well, you don't need to do it now.
It's on my desk, I got it. Where can you leave it?
We want to make sure we give you accurate information.
Do with any issue in the near future?
Yeah, it's all going to change.
Before I forget what I asked.
Well, that's the other reason, is it's nice because it's transparent for other people that might be wondering this, we'll catch it on the video as well so that it's there as a record for those that might be wondering something similar. Because we're another month out before we meet again and it'd be nice to know. While we're getting that information together, any other budget before I move on? Any other budget questions or pieces of information? The other part of the strategic plan then was to create a financial infographic. Let me pause there, let's get this before we go.
Five, or excuse me, 712 bus and seats and the equivalency is 672 for the January 2nd Friday count.
Are the actual numbers are what?
712 students.
Where are you going with the other number?
It's the formula that we use. So for the four-year-old program, they only count those as 0.6 of a student. So instead of 48, it's converted to 29.
So the FTE is what? 6, what?
672.
672.
And that includes our home in Mineral?
No. That is only your full-time equivalent, resident in, resident out.
712.
712 is just full-time. 712 is just full-time equivalency, is not your open enrollment number. Add it in there.
So open enrollment into the district is 60 students, out is 44.
So we add the 16 to the 712.
Well, the difference of the 60 and the 44...
Yeah, so 69.
Is 16, and then that's reimbursed at a lesser rate than the full-time equivalency, which I think is where you're going.
But there was a question, how many kids we have in the building?
712 students.
If they all have their own ones, if you send them to...
672.
Plus the 60.
But you don't get that credit.
Kids that are coming from other districts is subtracted. Those kids are subtracted from our aid because the other, they reside in a different school district. That school district gets their aid, then they...
The sparsity, it's the 672 that we go by, right? Yes. We can put this on in the future agenda if you wanna get really deep.
Well, I think it's, I mean, it's a good segue into the infographic because I feel like there's a lot of stuff on here that we can bulk up because, I mean, this is even somewhat high-level for someone picking it up off the street. And this is a perfect example of this, what is it? You know, open enrollment trends, what does that mean?
Right.
I think some people could probably figure it out. There's a lot of people that are gonna look at it and not really know what that means, and what does that mean for students and the numbers, so...
So I can talk a little bit about this. So an infographic is designed to be very graphic and not a lot of info, and it's supposed to provide people that are looking at it, like, for talking points. So if you were to take this around as a board member, you would ideally then be able to speak to it. So I think that's a good point, that we need to maybe talk about some knowledge behind it. I asked for, I solicited examples from my school PR network group, and what they include on theirs and different things like that, and some were very wordy, and they said this isn't even an infographic, this is just an information sheet. So based on the strategic plan, we have an infographic now. One page was almost virtually impossible because there's a lot of info when it comes to school finance. So when you go into Forecast 5 and you play around, you get a lot of information, and it's overwhelming, and it's frightening if you're not a school finance person, which I'm not. So the open enrollment trend is on there, and we just talked about it. Ideally, I, so I'm not a government planner, and I wanted to make one where there's the resident enrollment and the open enrollment together in same graph, but that didn't really happen on this first go-around. So I think that would be beneficial, and then you would see the fill-in between the declining resident enrollment that Luke spoke about and the trending upward open enrollment.
And so, you know, to cast a 30,000-foot on this, is this is our first draft of an infographic to try to meet the spirit of, we need a place where you can just quickly capture our financial snapshot, and so people could go there and kind of just quickly see visually where we're at on a couple of areas. So we do want your feedback because we're going to continue to tweak this and get this kind of down to a document that we're proud of and that we can put out on our display on our website and so forth. So we're soliciting feedback, starting with the open enrollment. To Joelle's point, the green is the number of kids coming in. Over time, you can see that's going up, the number of kids are going out. The blue line is then the net, where when we first arrived in 2010 and 11, my arrival, we had more kids going out, 11 and 12, and then it started to kind of tick up for less and less we're going out, and now we're finally in the positive in 2015 and 16. So we don't have this year's data in there yet because the infographic only goes back to certified audited data from the 15, 16 school year. So our net in is now positive since last year, actually two years ago, we started to break that positive track.
But those students don't get state aid here?
Those students get not a full state aid, they get $6,700. Yeah. So we pay for every kid that goes out, $6,700 of our money as a resident district goes out with them. And for every kid that comes in, their district is giving us $6,700 back.
But the state aid stays with our, the kid that goes out, our aid stays here.
Our aid stays here, right.
So for example, like, that level of detail that you just said would not usually appear in words on an infographic?
You know, I think there's sort of two different things. I mean, there's the stuff that we would put on the website that, you know, paint a positive picture, or, you know, a realistic picture, and that's all good. But then, we might need more information, I was thinking, as board members sitting here. And it can be in a graphic form, but it might have more information. I mean, I made a list, and I don't know how you wanna go about it.
I think a list is a great place to start because we can start to capture what people are looking for, what information would be helpful for you as a board member. It's readily available, and if not, we can retrieve it and get it for you so that you have all of the information you want in order to make informed decisions.
I mean, I think the graphics are great, and I really like, you know, that we're going in this direction and that we have information like this, that we would put out there in a non-referendum climate. You know, where it would just help people understand, you know, what's in the picture.
This one, I think, is helpful. It doesn't have dollar amounts on it because I just, that got a little overwhelming, and I think this is similar for most districts that you look at. I think it's just a strong talking point that salaries and benefits make up close to 75. I mean, it's a lot of...
About 2/3 of our money, every, you know, 66 cents on every dollar is going out to salary and benefits.
And the capital budget is much smaller than I believe people realize.
I think we're gonna have to be careful about, though, is trying to be transparent and then not being clear. Because I think if I was someone that didn't know and I was out inter-diss perm, I don't know what that means. So it's transparent, I'm seeing numbers, but I don't even know what, I mean, purchase, serve, like, someone is not gonna know what that means. So my concern with it is not that it's not good information, I think that it is. I think we need to just sort of look at it through a lens of someone who doesn't know much about what, I mean, Fund 10, in general, I just, I feel like we gotta make sure talking to the people we're talking to.
I get that, and I totally get that, that's just separate from what an infographic is. So I almost feel like you need a supplement or something then of that.
Maybe we should just not get hung up on infographic. I mean, it just needs to be, I think...
I also get that, but I also would, school finance, it's boring for a lot of people, and the attention span of people, and I think that's why schools have gone towards infographics, is because you just can't keep the attention of people, let alone explain, like, a...
Yeah. I mean, this is kind of what I do for a living. I mean, I see your point, and I see what you're doing. I think that is useful, and maybe just adding a few words, like, what is Fund 10? Maybe a key at the bottom as to what each of those items are, and then maybe the dollar amounts on the second page, like you said. I mean, I think, I think you're close. I don't think, I don't think there's a whole lot of basic information on it.
Yeah, I just think if we get too wordy, we're gonna lose people. You know, Luke sent out that great thing from the Wisconsin Tax Care Alliance, and he forwarded it to everybody, but it was like eight pages long, and I'm like, nobody's gonna read page one on this, they're just not. So I think...
It's quite subtle.
Yeah. So I think that's where we really wanna, and I wanna make sure that everybody's educated as board members. I think that is important, that you can take this around and have conversations with people. But I think everybody has to be knowledgeable on their own, and then, like, hey, if you'd like more info, here's our supplement, or whatever we wanna call it. So I think they're in there. I'm, wanna go to the next page?
Sure.
I don't wanna spend too much time on this, but I think you can make some really cool conversations here when you compare per pupil revenue and expenditures to then the bottom graphic with, keep going, with the report cards. And I don't know if you've started to make these comparisons as you've looked at it, but if you look at Barnabell with the lowest report card, so what I did is I took districts that we border and districts that are in our county, and Barnabell is the lowest performing on the report card, and they also spend the least, if you go back up, it's kind of hard to see, you got it too big. Yeah. So they spend the least and also bring in the least. So I mean, it's just some interesting talking points. Highland spends more than the state average, but we outperformed them on the report card. I think it's just some interesting talking points there.
What actually do we spend per pupil?
Let me also add that when you go into Forecast 5 and you wanna drop per pupil revenue or per pupil expenditures, we checked all the funds. So you could just check Fund N or whatever, but we checked them all. So if you look up other school districts, then they have different numbers based on what they check in their funds when they compare this. So what's the actual dollar? I have the actual dollar amount on my desk.
When you did this, when we did the referendum back sheet, we had the per pupil amount. I don't know what fund you were using at that, but it'd be good to know, you know, just to compare apples and apples.
Yeah, and that was before my time.
The cost is your entire budget.
So whether your budget, whether your pupil, it's your cost.
Yeah. Typically, what happens is Fund 10 and Fund 27 tend to be your operational costs. It's your general education and your special education is what you spend, and that's usually a good comparable in what it costs to run your district. Where it gets kind of confusing, for instance, Darlington is, right now, has a $4 million project in the queue, and if they go forward with that, they will show $4 million worth of expenditures as part of their budget, which really isn't part of their operations, it's just they've chosen to upgrade facilities. So it's not a true representation of the revenue they just got in, which is $4 million, and the expenditures that are going out. So for those years that they're in those referendums, if you take the total budget, which is those Fund 40 dollars, it will skew many districts' budgets because it's not truly what they used to operate.
Well, it's just still, it's a cost for educating the student, and you wouldn't write it all off in one year. Assuming that they didn't have $4 million in cash, so they probably did a, what, 15, 20-year?
A bond, right.
So, okay, well, then you would divide and take the percentage of whatever the payment is on that each year, and that would be part of your cost.
You know, our payments were roughly, you know, $600,000 to build this school, and we have that as part of our expenditures, but it really wasn't money that we were spending to operate the school, it was just paying back a note. So those that have done bonding projects, I'm just saying, if you look at the total budget, it will look very different than those that haven't done bonding projects. So that's why you tend to look at the operations of districts our size to compare, what are we costing to operate Fund 10 and Fund 27, regular and special, compared to another district our size.
Well, maybe you do two different, you know, charts.
Absolutely.
These are the, just the Fund 10 and 27 combined, and this is the total.
But we are open to your suggestions and feedback as we continue to move this into a draft, into more of a final state down the road. We wanna try to get this to where the board wants it. So if you have any additional feedback you'd like to share now, please do. Otherwise, send Joelle or myself any comments or suggestions, and we'll continue to revise. And if there's another laundry list of things you'd like to see, because we're already into a two-page infographic, then maybe it goes into some other type of publication, which is a district handout or something. If somebody were to come in the office, we just wanna hear from you about what you'd like to see for the district.
I think there's room on the pie grasp to add a little bit more detail.
Luke, Chris, and I can't, we're rated pretty high, yet we got 49% of kids are proficient readers?
We're well over, I think, 50% on, are you looking at a specific grade level, or?
It was middle school, probably.
Middle school is our distinguished school. I think they have the highest reading percentage, if I'm not mistaken.
I think there was one, I believe, there's one class, I feel like it's the big class, was it some graders now? That had, that had a lower percentage?
62% weren't proficient.
It was a bunch that weren't proficient, and then that's one of how we get the high scores.
62% on the reading and 40-some percent on the math in that class. 72% are on the honor roll.
Okay. A little bit confusing. That wasn't me, I thought it was you.
Some data I would like to see on this is the revenue and expenditures just for Mineral Point over the years, like, going back five years. I mean, this compares us in a snapshot to other districts, but it doesn't take a look at what Mineral Point, how we changed over the years.
Sure.
So I would like to see that both with the total revenue and total expenditures, and also the per pupil. And then the enrollment over the years, just the, I mean, sort of what we were talking about at the beginning. And then the mil rates, both looking at Mineral Points mil rate over the last five years, and then also comparing our mil rate to the other districts. And then with the graphs, it is hard to tell, like, what the per pupil expenditures and revenues are. I mean, you see here, Mineral Point somewhere between 13,5 and 18,000, but I can't really tell what the numbers are.
Do you want those other graphs that you said added on just like this, so it'd be like a five-page infographic?
I mean, I know that would be, I mean, I think it depends on what we're using this for. I mean, just personally, that's what I would like to see. I mean, that would be helpful information to me. I don't know that it, you know, how much...
Well, I mean, I think going back, was there a specific, it sounds like there was a specific directive from the strategic plan to have an infographic. So I heard two things tonight, right? I heard Joelle mentioning that it was going to be sort of a talking, a piece to board members to go out and speak knowledgeably. But I also heard you say it will go on our website, and it's going to be something that people will see. So I think maybe clarifying where, what we want and what the use of it is, is really important. Because I agree, a five-page infographic isn't going to be something that's maybe useful on our website, but maybe we'd need a five-page tool to help us just understand baseline information as board members so we can speak knowledgeably when people approach us.
And we need you to create a five-page infographic than it is the five-page mini version of the Tax Care Alliance program. So the more words we start to put in this, the more people are going to start to get lost on the surface because it is complex. State aid funding formula is not an easy formula to follow. So we, you know, I think what I'd like to do is just take these next five-year snapshots and some of your lists, and if there's others that are coming in, create some additional infographics, so we can start to move them around a little bit, maybe it's five pages worth of stuff that we condense to three.
And I think the suggestions, I mean, really only adding a page. I mean, an enrollment over the years, that's one chart. The Mineral Point, five years expenditures, that's a chart. Five years revenue, that's a chart. And the mil rate.
It'll be two, probably.
Okay.
I guess I would just be careful providing the expenditures, like we have them, per district and the mil rate, because people are going to take the information how they want it. Because if we give them the expenditures and we give them the mil rate, the difference is really the valuation of property, and I don't think that's gonna come through a lot of people. So if the mil rate says we're higher than other districts, and that's the point they're trying to make, that's the information they're gonna take and ignore the... I mean, I think we're already giving them that information in the expense comparison per pupil. Maybe not.
But you raised a point that I think is worth asking the board, is we have had scenarios where our tax levy went down, but the mil rate went up, and that can happen when you're over, when the age shifts, and it has shifted sometimes significantly. So that's the part that I think you wanna either focus on the levy and how much is being levied from the community in total tax revenue, or you're focusing on the mil rate, how much you're paying per thousand, with all the other factors of the valuation of homes and what state aid was or wasn't given in any given year and so forth. It's not an apples-to-apples comparison year in, year out, but the total levy is, it's how much their community raised and sent off to the state.
I intentionally left the mil rate off, just definitely, for that reason, this time.
Well, the mil rate shows how heavily you are taking money from the district, and the cost, this shows what the actual cost is, or two, you know, you can't compare one thing to another. One might have a low mil rate because they have a high valuation, but that means that the people are giving a smaller percentage of their taxable property to the school district, where if your mil rate is 12 and your, somebody else's is nine, you're giving 33% more of the value of your property to keep the school, where the dollar is a per student, is dollars per student, that's two different things.
You know, the mil rate, it's one of these complicated things. I think people have a difficult time understanding it, but I don't think that means that we shouldn't try to tackle it. And I think that was sort of the point of this, was to take the complex things that the school board deals with and put it in some form that's understandable. So we might not, I mean, I... So we might not, I mean, I, I think we did come up with something a few years back, and I think Susan helped with it, explaining the mil rate. And I can go back and see if we can find it. Um, but I do think we can come up with, maybe it's a separate page on explaining with, how the mil rate is determined, um, and the factors that go with it. I mean, I think people
Maybe we almost want to break this down into, we talk about certain things that, you know, we do it in parts, because already I think it's overwhelming for a lot of people.
Making change is hard for a lot of people.
I don't know how you do that education piece, whether it's, but, um, I just.
Well, I think anytime you got a dollar figure, you had to get it to know where to put this graph, put the figure on there. You know, if it's 18 million, pull it down.
Sure, but we can put numbers on top of the bar, so.
Well, it needs to be the total amount, because if you're running a business, you don't just put what your operational expenses are, this isn't what you report on your income tax, it isn't what you use for your, any other method of accounting. You have to take your long-term debt, whatever it is, and be figured in there, too.
I think this is a really good start, and I'm glad that we're starting, you know, getting this moving. And I think it's going to be a document that we continue to, to work on and add, and, so.
We'll take a next step, and we'll bring something back for you to reflect on later in our next meeting.
Or the next address.
School Safety Committee.
I just wanted to bring attention to the, the board that we had talked about, starting a school safety committee. The school safety committee does have members that are before you up here on the big screen, but also in your board packet. Uh, it's a, a good committee. It was all volunteers. The student is Madison, is that right?
Yes.
Yes. So she will be representing the, the student portion of our committee. The first meeting is scheduled for Monday, the 27th of February, and we will be looking at, again, three areas of interest. Is school policy, procedure, protocol for when we're in the school day and how people enter the building. Uh, the second component would be after the school day. Do we continue to have the same protocol, or does it change once schools have ended for the day roughly at 3:30 PM? And then what do we do, if anything, for large events, grandparents' day, veterans' day assemblies, where we have mass amount of people coming into the buildings? How do we handle that practice procedure for securely having people come into the building? And we will work with this community group. Uh, we'll select a chair, who'll help guide our work. We'll keep you updated month-to-month with our minutes of our meetings, and we will report back to the board some of the key findings as we go forward. The final recommendation, we're hoping to wrap up our work by June.
Where did the idea from this, for this come from?
Uh, actually, it, it started as a reaction to some unfortunate matters that happened at our elementary, um, and a little bit slightly at our middle school, high school, where we had support staff that were filling in for regular staff, and people were buzzed into the building without knowing exactly who they were. There was some concern about the safety and security of people being able to get into the building when they weren't truly identified as, as somebody that was a known person. Even if we know the person, we don't always know the situation in the family or the home life. Somebody could be very angry, and it could come into the building. Um, and so some questions were raised by some citizens that were concerned about our current policy procedure, and as a result, we're attempting to address those concerns by having a community approach to address the topic.
How many meetings do you suspect, expect, Luke?
We expect monthly.
How many months?
Starting in February, so four to five meetings. Uh, if the work is done sooner, we will certainly reconvene sooner, but we will start with, much like any question, uh, we will dive into some information, we'll bring in keynote people that have worked through this process in the past, we'll read some literature about safe schools, we'll look at some of the latest techniques that have been used, uh, and come up with some, some comprehensive ideas about what we want to do, not just at the secure entrance, but it might also include the classroom doors and how we secure those, should we have an intruder in the building.
And I would expect that all board members are invited to attend all or any of these meetings?
Absolutely.
Yes. What time on the 27th?
That is a 4:30 PM start time, right here in the boardroom.
I see we do have Mr. Ottawa Law Enforcement. He had a law enforcement background in any of these people?
Uh, not law enforcement, uh, Mike Wagner, wasn't he law enforcement slash EMS? Clark Bennett, from a school nursing perspective.
So law enforcement.
Jason Basting, I think, has some experience in, in this area.
So Hyatt County has a emergency management
Dr. Donovan.
Emergency Management Director. I'd like to see him part of this, if he is willing to participate.
Who would, who would that be, Larry?
Keat Hilber.
We will certainly extend an invite.
Sure, we'll check with, put him in contact with him. Andy, we sure could check if he's willing.
We will keep you updated as we go forward.
All right, uh, state convention?
Uh, just a quick report out and a, a short video from one of our keynotes, but three people attended the Wisconsin Association of School Board State Convention, myself, member Stevenson, and Communication Director Joel Doyt. I thought it was one of the, the better keynote conferences that I've been to, and we can each take a turn and maybe share a couple of, of just report outs, but, um, one was, the, the opening keynote was David Horsiger, who has counseled and led companies across the globe on, on areas of trust, and we'll show a short video around some of his message that I think really resonated with the three of us. Uh, there was Fred Lavardi. Fred was a teacher in a predominantly Spanish-speaking school out of the state of Arizona that had a group of kids that approached him about starting a robotics club, a robotics arts club. And Fred did some amazing work where kids in a high school that didn't speak the language very well actually competed and beat college kids in a, in just one year's time with some of their innovative innovation and ingenuity. Uh, they actually made a movie about his story called Spare Parts, and it was a pretty engaging experience that I felt was a really good keynote. Uh, the third keynote was Liz Murray, and Liz Murray was born in Harlem, New York, under some of the, the worst conditions you can imagine. Uh, probably one that, um, if you could stereotype what Harlem might look like in its worst condition, that was her home life. Uh, it was through an alternative school setting, a charter school, a, a school outside of the traditional school that found Liz and, um, and gave her an opportunity to go on to Harvard. And there's also a movie made, entitled From Harlem to Harvard, uh, that characterizes her story of, of her journey. And she was a very motivational speaker that touched me personally in a way that really reinforced that the, the work that we're doing in an alternative school is meaningful work, and, uh, you can save a life, you can save a soul, you can save a kid if you have an alternative setting for, for some to succeed and thrive in. Um, so that was one that, um, you know, certainly tears were welling up in many eyes as she shared her, her struggles and then her final celebrations. I'll, I'll let Joel and, and Julie share a few of their sessions, um, and maybe, Julie, if you don't mind kind of kicking up the, the video, we'll maybe move into that as well, and then we can talk about some of our mini sessions as well.
Sure. So I just want to clarify, you said at the end about the Liz Murray story being an alternative school. It is a public school
Yes.
versus charters. I don't, I mean, maybe it's the same, I just want to make sure that it was clear. Because it was, it was very, it was moving, and she made it very clear that, um, you know, she, she found a public school that worked for her, and in this alternative setting, and it made all the difference. It was, it was great. So I can talk a little bit about the video, um, the, the keynote speaker who kicked off the entire event. It was actually interesting, because in the last meeting, there was, you know, clearly sort of some discontent around trust and Nexus and trust, and, and I mentioned that in the meeting, and then the, you know, keynote kicks off, talking about this trust deficit that sort of runs through our organizations and our politics and just in our country in general. And he talks about it, and he just touches a little bit in this short video about how a lack of trust is really an organization's most expensive, um, sort of, we need to consider it a, a big expense to organizations and to schools and to, um, you know, fam, when, when you don't, when people don't trust one another, there's a lot of inefficiencies. So I thought that was really interesting, as a, as a board that I think wants to make sure that we are, um, spending every, every penny in, in the smartest way possible, that, building a, you know, a base of trust is probably a really important thing that we should focus on. So, um, this is a, a really short video that kind of just talks a little bit about what he got into, and, um, I purchase books personally to, um, to read and share with the people I work with, which, because I think it isn't just a school issue. Like you mentioned, it's all organization. So if anyone is interested, um, just let me know, but I think the eight minutes will be worth people's time.
What were the key findings to the trust research? We, of course, continued to research on trust and how it affects organizations and brands and leaders around the world, but I started back in my graduate research, thinking differently about trust. And that led me to two key findings around why and how. First was the why. Why trust? Why is it important? Why? Well, I found the why was very important. I found that a lack of trust really is your biggest expense. A lack of trust costs more than anything. In fact, you'll pay more for the trusted brand, follow the trusted leader, buy from the trusted salesperson in spite of price almost every time. You will trust the professor or teacher or parent. Trust, a lack of trust, really is your biggest cost, your biggest expense, and the single uniqueness of the greatest leaders, organizations, brands, friends, CEOs of all time is trust. First part of the research was, why trust? Because it's more important than anything else if you want to make a great impact in any way. The second part of the research was, how? How do you build trust, then? Is it just integrity, or is it just honesty, like some people think? No, there's a whole lot more to it. And that led me to the eight uniquenesses that came out of the research. Of course, in the book, and now we call them pillars, because we think they hold up the greatest advantage of all time, something we've come to call the trusted. The greatest competitive advantage or competitive edge you can have is being trusted. We call that the trust edge. So how do you build it? Eight pillars. The first pillar is consistency. We trust those that are the same every single time. They're consistent, for good or bad. If you're late all the time, I trust you to be late. If you speak well with people, whether I'm in the room or out of the room, I tend to trust you. We tend to trust McDonald's, whether we like them or not, because they give us the same. I've had the same burger in Cleveland, Frankfurt, and Tokyo. It's the same. It smells the same, looks the same, might be made of something different, but it, it's the same pickles off center everywhere I go. It's that sameness that we tend to trust. We want to know you're going to be the same all the time. You're going to deliver the same product, you're going to act the same. Then we'll trust you. The second pillar is clarity. People trust the clear, and they mistrust or distrust the ambiguous in every area. Clarity of vision, we tend to follow and focus on. Clarity of expectations, as a parent, or as a teacher, or as a manager, we tend to respect those people that are clear about the most important things they can do every single day, they get the most done for their organization and themselves. Clarity. The third pillar is compassion. We trust those that think beyond themselves, that, don't underestimate, by the way, the power of actually caring beyond yourself. Compassion is powerful. The fourth pillar is character. Many people thought this was everything. It's not everything, but it is foundational. The leaders and people that really had this pillar did what needed to be done, when it needed to be done, whether they felt like it or not. We have a problem in our country. Many people do what they feel like over what they ought to do, and they lose trust as a result. It is the work of life to do what's right over what's easy. Those that do what's right over what's easy, they live healthier, they have people that want to vote for them, follow them, buy from them, listen to them, do what's right over what's easy. You'll build the character pillar, and you'll start to gain the trust edge. The fifth pillar is contribution. This pillar speaks the idea that at the end of the day, I need to see results. You need to be a contributor of results. You might have compassion, you might have character, but if you don't give me the results I asked for or expected, I can't trust you. The sixth pillar is competency. You might have great character, you might have great compassion, but I might not trust you to give me a red canal unless you're competent at that. I trust the person that stays fresh, relevant, and capable in the area they want to be trusted in. Competency starts with humility, knowing I don't know it all. And then it builds on that by putting good things in. Uh, there's a truth in every single science, that input leads to output. Business, because the input leads to output. First law, thermodynamics, says the energy you put in is exactly the same as the energy you get out. Basic psychology says thoughts lead to desires, which lead to actions. You got to put good thoughts in to get good actions out. Those that stay competent and capable, they put good in, and as a result, good came out. The seventh pillar is connection, the ability to connect and collaborate. Those people that, they think beyond themselves, but they work together to get even more done. They're not just totally independent, they're not codependent, but they're interdependent, using the best of each, trusting the best of each, and working together for the best of all. The final pillar is commitment. Commitment, it's hard to teach, but those that had this pillar had a very important piece of the trust edge. Commitment. This starts with ourselves. People often ask me, how do you rebuild trust? How do you, I mean, we've all maybe lost it to some degree, we're all imperfect. How do I rebuild it? I'll tell you something, there's only one way, and it's not the apology. It might need to start with a sincere apology, but that's not most important. The whole chapter on rebuilding trust is you need to make and keep a commitment. You need to make and keep a commitment. A friend of mine from the Netherlands, he was, came over, he was a CEO. I said, what do you see as the difference in America? Any differences you notice? First thing he said, in America, you have a bunch of lying apologizers. They all say they're sorry, and they don't mean it. It's not the apology. We know people that say they're sorry all the time and don't mean it. You might have to start with a sincere apology, but more important for me to trust you again is to make and keep a commitment. Don't make so many commitments. And mean it on the ones you make. Don't tell your kids you'll be there if you absolutely won't be there. What happened to me? Couple years ago, I told my team, if I'm not 50 pounds less by May 1st, if I'm not at my high school weight by May 1st, I'll give you $2,500. My wife wasn't overly thrilled about this idea, but I made a commitment. Now, if I would have got on the scale on May 1st and not been 2,500 pounds le, excuse you, if I would have been 50 pounds less, is the $2,500 the most important thing? That loss of $2,500? No. Way more important than that, I would have lost my team that day, because I made a commitment and didn't keep it. You know what's worse? I would have lost trust in myself, and that is by far worse. Quit making so many commitments. You've heard the idea, love your neighbors yourself, which means if you don't love yourself at all, you have a hard time loving others. We know people like that don't. It's the same with trust. If you don't trust yourself at all, you have a hard time building trust in your family, your relationships, and in your team. And the only way to build trust with yourself is to make and keep commitments. So don't make so many. New Year's resolutions, don't tell me you're going to lose 50 pounds, clean the garage, learn five languages, and make a million bucks. Pick one, pick two, and stay committed to those. At the end of the day, to build the trust edge, you need all eight, all eight pillars. Consistency, clarity, compassion, character, contribution, competency, connection, and commitment. When you build those, each of them just a little bit, you start to gain, I think, the greatest advantage of all time, something we've come to call the trust edge.
So one of the things I got was interesting, and then I'll, I was, was that communication is not on there. And he, he really went into a little bit more detail in the presentation about how , um, communication, uh, just, you know, in general, is not enough. You need to make sure that all of the communication that you're putting out is meeting those pillars, and I think, um, that was sort of a revelation for me, because you think of communication as being, that's trust, and, and really, it's, um, it's the meaningful communication, so.
Joel, did you guys want to say it real quick?
Um, we're still talking about that one, are we going to go into our other sessions?
I think the others as well.
Oh. I thought, I attempted a really good one from the Hudson School District. They talked about community engagement, so that's why I like to
So that's why I like this conference because I have a whole separate community engagement track which deals with social media or actual physical community engagement. So it works really well. But they talked about how their referendum success, they really thought was because their stakeholders that they brought to the table, they did a really hard job. It's hard work to go out of your way to find people that wouldn't otherwise come to the table. And you have to give those people a voice because everybody votes in a referendum, and it's not the people that are engaged and coming to the meetings that you necessarily need to hear from, but it's really hard work to go out and find those people and bring their voices to the table. So that was kind of interesting. They also talked about how they needed to show that facilities drive learning, and a lot of people haven't been in schools in a very long time, and they don't know how kids learn, how things have changed since they were in school, and that's understandable if they don't have a connection. So it's really important, if you can't get people physically into the building, do a great job with photos and video and those kind of personal stories to do that. Something I thought was really interesting too was they said, don't put anything out to survey that you're not willing to accept the results of because your instant credibility is lost. So if people take the time to fill out a survey and give their opinion and their feedback and then whoever the decision makers are just kind of blow aside because it doesn't fit the agenda that they were hoping to hear, your instant credibility is gone. So that's something to kind of keep in mind. I also went to a social media roundtable session and I went, it was about like how to deal with negative negativity on your social media page, and I'll knock on wood because I will probably wake up tomorrow night to like some sort of nightmare, but we have been very fortunate that we just, we just don't have that here. And they talked about, we shared good ideas, it was Verona that hosted this, about why that is and how other school districts can, and it really comes down to telling your school district's story. And it tended to be that the schools that had a lot of problems weren't doing the best job of that. So I think that's great, and I think we have a lot of good brand ambassadors that can, that are willing to step up and set the record straight if there is misinformation and things like that. So I felt good with that one. I also thought that Superintendent of the Year Damian La Croix from the Howard Salomillo School District, I don't know if we were going to talk about this, that was Silas Thunder, but because I actually looked for a video, I asked if anybody recorded it, and I haven't got it back yet, so I'll work on that, but I think I'd be worth sending out just to hear his speech. He really reinforced the message that everybody there is called to lead in some way, shape, or form, and we're called to serve kids and do what's right for the kids on a daily basis, and about how to message your school district's story. And Howard Salomillo kind of hits close to home to me because my number one call, if I have a problem or just want to vent or share ideas, is to their communications director. So to have him there and seeing how proud he was of his superintendent, and they started on the journey much the same way we did, with a PR program and at the same time as we did. And so he's like my best friend, and to hear him be so proud of his superintendent and hear his superintendent do such a great job, that was very moving, so.
Yeah, he was really good. I would also like to, he gave an excellent speech.
And I would just wrap it saying, one session on personalized learning, more specifically around student engagement, given by a past state superintendent here, Deb Kerr from the Brown Deer School District was really powerful and impactful. They've done a lot of work about, if your student is engaged in the classroom and is really taking ownership in their learning, the gains that they've seen because of that engagement factor has really skyrocketed. So we've done a lot around, a lot of initiatives I'll share, and when we have more time, we'll come back to that. And then I was also a presenter at the state convention along with the four other schools in the Boost Consortium around our telepresence efforts, and people were interested to learn what we've been able to do to offer course content between schools, and we're also now receiving dual enrollment credit from UW-Plattville Southwest Technical College. Kids are going to be graduating high school with three, six, nine, 12 credits in just a year or two, which is something that is really exciting for our community. Any questions about the state convention or anything we can clarify?
Which classes are kids going to get dual credit for?
They will get dual credit for, right now there's a literature class the kids are taking. I think there's 10 kids that are taking UW-Plattville course by Dr. David Giellati, and there is one other kid that is receiving credit, I thought it was the Southwest Technical College Kickstart Course, which is a course that will transfer to any university. And then Matt Nevers is teaching the UW-Oshkosh Camp Course, second semester. He may even have two courses, music theory, and I forget the title of the second one, it's new this year, but any kids that are taking that would be eligible for UW College credit there, as well as Mr. Schmitz is teaching archery, that students can receive physical education credit through UW-Oshkosh for taking his archery course.
Any other questions on the convention? Direct policy 662.
The first draft policy, I mentioned this in the superintendent's report last week, or last month, starts on page 28, if you wanted to look at the policy directly. This policy is specifically in response to our recent audit from Johnson Block that had a finding in it that says we don't have a student activity fund guideline for funds that we are in Fund 60 that covers specifically student organizations. And so I have a proposed guideline here using some templates from other school districts as well as the WASBE services that we subscribe to. It's pretty self-explanatory. It goes through nicely and it gives examples of what activity funds are, and the purpose of money and how it should be accounted for as it goes in and goes out. I think the highlights I would share is currently Fund 60 has been used as a class account for reunions, and so the class of 2004, 5, and 6 all have an activity fund when their senior class expired. Those funds stay in that account, and then they could use or access those accounts for class reunions. DPI does not permit that use for Fund 60. School funds should stay with the school, and if they, at the end of the year, haven't expended down their senior class funds, then they can either make a one-time gift to the school for something that they would like to see happen, or that money would then be absorbed to Fund 10 and work with kids in poverty or kids that have a language barrier, but we would absorb that back into Fund 10. So that would be a shift in our currents. We would shut down a lot of those old accounts that are kind of hanging out there like bank accounts, and they could either gift it or we would absorb it into the general fund. Other than that, if you've had any questions about anything you've read, certainly let me know. I think I've highlighted the key components. Marcia has looked through this and given me some advice and some suggestions prior to coming here. I would also work with our principals to make sure that they have a clear understanding of the guidelines that are being put forward.
So if there's a class, let's use a class 2004, and they have $500 in an account, did you notify them saying we have to do something with that? And if they wish to pull it out?
We haven't in the past, but that's what this policy would do going forward, is at the end of the year, you need to use any remaining funds for a designated purpose that the class would decide, and if they don't designate a purpose, then we would sweep that into the general fund to work with kids in poverty.
But they will be notified or whatever the contact is on the phone.
Each group that has a current fund balance would be contacted and let them know that they have, you know, 30 days to decide how to use those funds or that at the end of the year it will be absorbed.
So do all the clubs that, all clubs use this fund for their dollars, or do some clubs have their own, you know, checking accounts that they use outside of this?
All clubs are eligible to use Fund 60. The purpose of Fund 60 is for those student organization, all the expenditures and revenues to be accounted for, much like the stadium account. You've got an account for future business leaders of America that's not getting tied up with a function for the Skills USA group. Some parents may choose to keep a checkbook off to the side. We wouldn't advise that because you cannot then account for revenues and expenditures, and we've all heard news stories about booster clubs that have walked off with some monies. And so we'd like to have everything funnelled through Diane and Marcia in the office, and then the expenditures go back out, and that's audited annually so we know that everything ties. So that would be best practice. You know, we can't stop somebody from having their own private checking account that would be used as a funding source for a sport or a club, but DPI is pretty clear in the rule of these funds are segregated and separated for a purpose specifically for clubs and organizations.
Is there a lot of clubs that have inactive accounts?
No, most of them are musics and so forth, are fairly active, fairly regular, yearbook, money in, money out, key club, much the same. I can't think of any that are sitting out there idle. The only reason it would sit idle is if, for instance, the Spanish group would probably use a Fund 60 to go on their trip. They'll keep the money in their account and then they'll expend out of that. If they don't go in any given year, the money might hang in there for a year or two because it's two years out before the next trip. But as long as the kids are in the program, the idea is that the money that they raised should go back to support their efforts, not future efforts down the road. If they're saving for a long-term project, then they use Fund 21 as a special account for that type of revenue.
Doesn't this policy mandate that any organization put their funds in this Fund 60? They should not be.
They should not be voted.
Some organization out there with some side checking account going on.
Correct. It gives us the muscle, if you would, to say we have a policy that states that you need to bring these dollars back on any of these school districts under for a school district sponsored club. The other thing also that had raised the flag is that those funds should not be used for employee compensation. It can be used for reimbursement of expenditures, for I bought supplies for an event, but it shouldn't be used to actually supplant compensation. That should be run through our salaries in our general operation because those are benefit eligible and you need to have an accounting for that. So we can't be paying teachers who are acting as club advisors out of these accounts. This is more for fundraising efforts that go back to the kids and support kids' efforts.
So this could be, is there, I don't know how to phrase this, but there's been discussion about the amount of fundraising that the clubs do. So would this enable us to use more of that buyout of fundraising? Like, at the beginning of the year, if you wanted to opt out of fundraising and write a check for, as a parent, for 300 bucks and then your kid didn't have to fundraise?
Right.
Could this be an easier way to do it because you would have one account that you could?
Correct. It would have designated an account for that club or organization that they could give a check of $300 directly to the club, thereby essentially buying out of the fundraising efforts. They don't have to go door-to-door selling popcorn, for instance. They'd rather just write a check to the organization. We would receive that check, it would go, be accounted for in the check registry as a deposit or revenue, and then we would hold those, it does carry over. If the funds are active, if the funds are not active, then that fund would shut down and would close instead of staying out open indefinitely.
Number five, policy 110.
Policy 110 and 120, 130, 131 are just an effort to start to review the 100 series. They just kind of started at the beginning. It's a very good place to start. It is, really, there's no rhyme or reason to any of these policies. I'm not trying to persuade the board into accepting anything that they're not comfortable with. It's just that we haven't reviewed these policies specifically in some cases, most of them 15 years, in many cases 20 or 25 years. So it was just a time to kind of freshen them up, make sure they stay current with current DPI rule, current state statutes, as well as just update to reflect our current mission and vision statement that was redone four years ago. So as you go through these policies, I have shared with you the old policy, and then I've given to you the proposed new policy, much the same in some of the original format, but certainly some special language in each of these. The only place that I saw, a place that I would bring to the board's attention, again, all of these policies are a first reading, they'll be brought back next month, so if you want additional time to review or ask questions, nothing's being voted on tonight. The one area that I wanted to bring to the board's attention is method of election, which is page 43 in your board packet, it's policy 131. Currently, members are just voted on at large. The proposed policy, you'll see an optional provision that's underlined, and that's on page 45. The optional provision allows for, in addition to our normal way of going forward with elections, which is to fill out the paperwork and file it with the district office, which would be Ms. Schubert here, is that you have the ability to require a minimum of so many signatures if you so choose. It could be a number as low as 20 signatures, it could be a number like 100 signatures. I didn't want unilaterally just not include that language. I wanted the board to have the opportunity to discuss whether they do or don't consciously want to still not have signatures, which is the current practice. And so I'm not advocating for it, I just would rather leave that as a board decision rather than my decision. So that's where I need some direction from you as to whether you want to keep that provision with a threshold, and you decide that number, or if you want to remain as is and just have no petitions of signatures.
I mean, it's a bad idea. Well, in the past, we had a problem getting people to run for the board. It's just been the last few years that you've ever had any, pardon, any contested races. I was solicited by the administration and some of the school principals when I ran the first time. And the last time, I was solicited by a bunch of the constituents.
I can see the merit in it. I mean, that you would go around and talk to members of the community and get 20 signatures. I know to run for city council, you've got to get 20 signatures. So it's certainly not unheard of, but, you know, I don't feel strongly moving that way.
Well, I know some places you have to have a certain percentage of whatever number of people voted in the last election, but, you know, I don't, I don't support it. I don't understand why we need to, you know, make it any harder because we've had problems getting people to run before, so the more difficult you make it, the more people are going to not be interested. We'd need more people interested, not less. Do you want to vote on this now?
It's not, for action.
It would bring it back in its final form, depending on, you know, where this group is. We're not approving the policy, we're just approving the direction of the policy, so, you know, a simple consensus or...
Is there anyone on the board that wants to go and get signatures to run this?
No.
I certainly don't.
Okay, so I will take that out and bring it back to the final version without any language referencing that. Everything else should be pretty straightforward. If there's any questions?
I'm working on putting together policy books for all of the board members.
That's great, because I've noticed, like, on the website, you know, we passed policy 672 in August, six months ago, and it's not on the website.
Right.
And then there's other things.
We recognize that as well. That's part of what we're doing is reformatting it, getting not just the website updated, but also the policy books updated so that everybody would have a binder, doesn't have to go to the web. But to that point, you're right, it hasn't been current, and that's kind of what got this back into the project of starting with the 100s, and as long as we're doing this, let's get it over time cleaned up.
Have you covered all policies in both?
No, there's about one-third of the policies in...
He means on the agenda.
I want to be on the agenda, yes.
Oh.
Third way through the 100 series. There will be, I think, some more discussion around the next batch of 100s that I'll bring forward as it really starts to get into the election process, and what happens if somebody were to vacate a seat, and how do we fill a seat? And that's something that we can spend some time on at a different meeting later.
We look forward to that.
Hi, Ms. Fraxton. We already have a policy, don't we, for vacations?
Yep. So we'll just review it, make sure it's still doing what we said it was intended to do. Moving forward then, items for action?
We take a five minute. It's hot.
We'll work on that. We need some controls through an energy efficiency problem.
All right, I'm sorry.
Set me up for that one.
Locked it up, took a dance.
Home run! More specifically, there was some discussion in our last meeting with regards to what temperature school would be called for, and I was asked to do some investigative journalism and find out from our corner parts what they are doing, and it is all over the board. There is not a clear policy. Just a couple of quick ones. Kickaboo, they call school at a minus 30 for temperature. Kickaboo, they call school at minus thirty for temperature and minus thirty-five for wind chill. Pecatonica is minus twenty-five for wind chill and minus thirty for temperature. So same temperature, different wind chill. River Valley is minus twenty-five temperature, which is different from the other two. Sorry, that's Riverdale. Belmont is somewhere between the minus fifteen and minus twenty for wind chill, so that's yet again different. Highland is just whenever there's a warning. So there is no clear direction that we're going to give from our geographical counterparts or from our conference. So really, it's what the board desires. Again, what we had was schools are closed and the actual temperature used to be twenty-five, still is twenty-five, or the wind chill is thirty-five degrees below zero. That is, the reason this came up again was the Madison School District, we looked at their policy, they lessened that threshold to ten degrees less than what we're proposing. I proposed just to review it and maybe make a suggestion to go five degrees. So it would be at air temperature of twenty degrees below zero, we would close school, and thirty degrees below zero wind chill, we would close school. It's not as strict as it maybe was in the proposal, but it's not as generous as what Madison is. I'm not really tied to these numbers by any means.
And you're not bound by it on a day-to-day basis. I mean, if it's, you can still close school if it's, I mean, and you have.
Right.
When it doesn't even meet this threshold.
Correct.
So it almost doesn't really matter.
It doesn't, but the threshold, you know, there's always going to be that bubble call where it's like it's nineteen, so you call it a twenty and nineteen versus twenty-five. You're not going to call it a nineteen, but if it's twenty, you might, you know, it's kind of moves that line down a little bit.
There'll always be that, though.
Yeah. There will always be that.
And I think it's more, it gives parents an idea. If they see the night before, oh, it's going to be negative twenty tomorrow.
Yeah.
They've got a pretty good idea.
And it also gives me a little bit of a threshold to say if it's going to be minus twenty-one is the forecast across three channels, then we just close it tonight. We don't have to wait till tomorrow morning. But if it's the minus nineteen and it actually turns out to be minus fifteen, well, then you wait in the morning to see if the bus is fired or not. And if they do, then we go, and if they don't, we delay. So whatever you want to do as a board is fine.
Any thoughts from the board?
Just to clarify, Luke, I think the books don't have below zero in them.
You're going to shut off the last line after the thirty there on the bottom?
Oh, yeah, that's funny. No, it doesn't in their books.
Interesting.
It does.
Says below zero is there at the last line? Well, I...
Yeah, this would be, to help you to...
Yeah, you're on the actual policy page.
Go to page fifty.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, page fifty is the actual policy.
Completely lost here. I can't remember the formula, but it's not a, five degrees on the wind chill is not very much random. I think, you know, your static temperature of the wind chill should be separated by a few more degrees than what they are.
This is a ten-degree separation.
I'd make a motion to leave it as it is.
Yeah, it's currently twenty-five and thirty-five.
What's Dodgeville's policy?
That one I did not get back.
Because it seems like we only close when Dodgeville closes. So it'd be...
Actually, it's the other way around.
As soon as administrator hears some school closes within forty miles, they're going to be right on the telephone because nobody wants to be the one that didn't close and something happens.
So you got a motion to leave the policy as is, is there a second? I'll second it. I think we should leave it as is, it missed out.
Can I make one other, since we're still talking about it?
Sure.
The name of the policy, school day, doesn't really, if you're looking for when is school going to close, school day might not be the one you would click on. I would recommend to be, leave the first two paragraphs as school day, but then have another policy, three-twenty-two-point-one, called school cancellations, that starts cancellation... You see what I'm saying?
Yep.
Split it into...
Don't disagree. We should probably act on the motion that's here and then come back with that one.
Right, I just thought it was a discussion.
Three-twenty-two-point-one?
Yeah, we'll come back with that in just a second because we got a motion with Glenn and Larry.
To leave the policy three-twenty...
Was it Larry, Larry, or was it Glenn, Larry?
It was Larry Dolphin, Larry Stappas.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? And this is to leave it as is.
And you're talking about the degrees.
Correct, yes.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Andy, if anything, right accordingly. Can I just give a clarification? This doesn't, I believe you've mentioned it already, this doesn't preclude Luke from making a call.
No, not at all.
So we're still, yeah.
Yeah, it's up to the discretion of Luke.
To seven oh?
What?
Anybody, anybody vote against?
Oh, against that motion?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll vote against it.
To leave it as is?
Yeah, I don't want to leave it as is. I would go with Luke's recommendation.
Okay, so six-one?
Anybody else want to vote against?
Can I ask for roll call?
Sure.
Dolphin?
No, I'm voting...
To leave it as is?
Yes.
Hey?
No.
Can't.
Yes.
Stevenson?
No.
Fasting?
No.
Bush? Stappas?
Yes.
Motion failed.
All right. Do we have a motion? Do you have a?
I move that we change the policy to take Luke's recommendation to go with twenty degrees below zero and thirty degrees of wind chill and split policies into two, so there's a section called school cancellations.
What's the section of school cancellation? What's that?
Three-twenty-two-point-one. Just taking this policy, leaving the first two paragraphs as policy three-twenty-two, and then where it begins with cancellation, that would be a new policy.
Are you changing the activities? Most activities scheduled on days when there's no morning pickup and if there is a morning pickup and the weather improves at noon, you can have afternoon.
I think that belongs under school cancellations.
Well, there's a couple of times this winter when we canceled the ball games in the afternoon. It was fine.
There is code called out and we can't have this question.
Presently, it is, I thought.
Yeah, for this policy, that's number two. When school is closed, do they, whether after school has commenced, no school-sponsored activities held after dismissal.
I don't think there's a school policy saying we can't have, that's the two schools. Like, if we're applying somebody who has that policy, then it would be canceled otherwise. I think it's just Mickey and the athletic director.
Yeah, let me verify. Number two is after school has started and we close school.
If we say, well, we can obviously have a game.
Then it would be canceled. So if we have an early release because we deemed it not safe to travel, we would not have a school event. But if you go back up to the one-B, the principal and the district administrator provides notice to the athletic director whether on an afternoon-evening scheduled event would go on if the weather conditions improved prior to noon. So you're right, Annie, there's flexibility if we have a school closure to determine if things improve later in the day to still have an event, but if we have an early release, then this policy states we cannot have a night event.
We're not changing that, though.
There's no one condition for changes there. It's just put it out a different piece of paper.
So we're lowering the temperature and we're going to be five degrees. I think we're making the wrong decision here. We'll get these kids in school more now, less during school year. We really do. Trying to do more with us.
We have a motion, but we don't have a second.
Oh, I thought I said one.
No, thanks, Lisa, or Julie.
And there's no other discussion, we'll do a roll call again.
So the motion was made to approve the recommended change to policy three-twenty-two, then to separate the cancellation section, starting with paragraph three, to a new policy three-twenty-two-point-one titled...
School cancellations.
Title, school cancellations. Hey?
Yes.
Kench?
Yeah, what are we talking, talking to twenty degrees below or thirty wind chill?
Yes, to approve the recommended changes to twenty degrees below zero or wind chill to thirty degrees below zero.
I think there should be more differentiation between the wind chill and the degrees, but yes.
Stevenson?
Yes, yes.
Fasting?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Dolphin?
Yes.
Stappas?
No. Motion carried.
Too many people that don't understand what wind chill actually is.
Okay, if it's twenty-one degrees below, we go towards my left, even if it's a nice sunny day or not. By this, we do.
But if it's going to be twenty-one below at eight, let's say nine o'clock in the morning, and at ten o'clock they're forecasting seventeen below, that is where the waste comes in. Fifty thousand dollars a day of old school here. We waste fifty grand of our taxpayer dollars. Exactly what we did. Number three, resolution to repeal existing start statutes, repeal existing state statutes restricting the start date.
This is on page fifty-one of your board packet, if you're interested in looking at the actual resolution as we talk it through. Page fifty-one really represents a resolution that, you'll see some discussion happening at the state level about moving the start date so that schools are able to start prior to September first. And there's a lot of rationale and reason why. There's a lot of discussion around this in the southwestern part of the state. Multiple boards have already adopted this specific resolution as well as resolutions like this, and it's starting to gain some traction around the state. Wisconsin, Dowell's, and others have strong lobbyists against this. It will still have to go through state process, but what this would do would be affirm the board's position on this particular resolution. If I can clarify anything, let me know. Otherwise, we would look for a motion to either approve or deny.
Here's a quote from here that says, "Representatives for more advantaged school districts supported legislation that would have allowed districts who had a certain percentage of students who take AP tests to start school when the local board felt it was academically necessary." I assume that that failed.
That is correct, yeah.
Okay. And there's no limit on when people could start school then if you take away the September one date? School boards across the state, if we were to sign on to this, we'd be saying it's local control and anybody can start school whenever they want.
Correct. It would be local control, other than if you wanted to start prior to July one, you'd have to get a waiver for year-round school through the Department of Public Instruction. But you would be able to start as early as July first, which is the new fiscal year.
If the state goes, then you won't need a waiver, though, would you?
If this goes through, at the state level, you would not need a waiver to start prior to September first, correct?
At this point, it's hard to get a waiver.
It is nearly impossible to get a waiver. There's very, very few exceptions, and that's by state statute. They limit the exceptions to schools that have a referendum bonding issue. I think there was one other exception, but it happens very seldom.
This, if this passes, the state, it still doesn't mean we have to start school before September first. And in the past, we have started before Labor Day, depending on how the calendar falls. So that's really immaterial. What bothers me the most about this policy is I can't believe anybody would want the state to tell us when to start school. I mean, put the control back in the school board, keep the control local.
Well, except that you start down a slippery slope. If you take that away and then everyone can start, you know, they want to be the most competitive school, and so, you know, some school will start, you know, August fifteenth, and another one will say, no, we're going to start August eighth. Another one will say, we're going to start August first.
Schools are going to go the same non-monthdays.
Yeah, well, it's in here.
Well, I make a motion, we support this resolution.
We had a motion, you have a second.
Just a point of discussion is most of us can remember pre-September first, there was, this came in as a budget amendment, so, you know, why a start date was part of a budget, I don't know, but the history of it is wrong. Prior to that, there wasn't that manipulation, and maybe it's because nobody really had become, and to your point, it wasn't as high-stakes accountability time as it is right now, but there wasn't that overall statewide abuse of trying to become more competitive, but we didn't have state report cards. So that's the part that I acknowledge is maybe different now, so.
If this goes through, you guys can say goodbye to August. You're going to be working in August.
But if that's the case, then why don't schools go until June thirtieth now? If it's to be competitive and to have more school...
We went through one hundred.
The limit is not put at the end of the year. So I think if that were to happen, or were going to happen, schools would just switch it to the end of the year, where they're not...
I remember schools that go June seventh, June tenth. We've just always been pretty conservative about starting at September.
I just think it should be our decision. I don't think that the state or the money in Wisconsin did tell us when we start.
I remember when we used to start at August twentieth all the time. So what's the difference if we do it at the start or we do it at the end? But by doing it at September one, then it seems like we try a lot harder to get everything we need to get done, so we get out further June or end of May.
I remember back when you got, we used to get out to twentieth, twenty-fifth of May, and the people up to Wisconsin Dell stuck it to us when they did this because at that time, a lot of the aid was made from school square bales, and you couldn't make aid because your kids are in damn school when they could have just as well been home. And I don't think of, they bought and paid for this bill, is what they did. They contribute to the legislators to get it through.
I'm just looking at the, looking back at the calendar discussion from a year ago. We now teach the minimum number of minutes required, and that was to be done by June second. And I think September first was on a Thursday this year, so we could have started that Monday or Tuesday, not tied to the minimum because an option was one-seventy-eight, I believe. And now we wouldn't have had the February twenty-fourth or the hurry up and have school on Friday. We would have, just situations like that.
I think we've had a strange year because I think, Luke, you had made the remark that the last three or four years, we'd only had three days.
Right, and I'm also not saying I would support starting before September first.
Right, how much slack can we get whenever school starts before Labor Day?
I'm just saying, I just think it should be in our control. I'm not even saying I would have to get public input to where I would sit on that. I think it should be our decision.
We always started before Labor Day years ago, till this.
I'm going to wrap discussion, if that's all right. We'll do a roll call, Angie.
Kench?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Fasting?
No.
Bush?
Yes.
Dolphin?
Yes.
Hey? No. Stappas?
Yes.
Long-term decision.
McLeire Construction is here. Thank you, Gary, for hanging in there with us. We did receive a roofing proposal today for what I would call a phase one of a roof project, and Roger and I did meet this afternoon and discussed that, and we worked with Gary to see if we could get a more comprehensive phase two slash three to encompass the entire roof. So Gary is going to work on that. It's going to take a little time. He's already been up here once and kind of put together that initial proposal. So, you know, in talking with Larry Stappas, it's probably best to come back and give you the time necessary to do that additional proposal and then have a buildings and grounds meeting to discuss those and bring a recommendation back to the board. But I do want, while Gary's here, to just share, I think it would be, and Gary can speak to this, but it would be helpful for him to be able to do what I would call a seek or search to determine what's necessary for the remedy, which might include removing some layers of brick and flashing to determine at what level that depth of problem is. And in order to do that, the district would spend some money to kind of investigate, search, and solve, or figure out what would take to solve the problem, and then a better remedy could be put in place. So you might want to look at an option where it's not repair the roof, it's just seek out, spend some money to seek out what kind of a depth we're talking about to repair the roof, and then that could be incorporated to a proposal. Did I say that correctly, Gary? Did I overspeak or overspeak?
Actually, what I did was, the proposal I made for you guys was fixing the, actually, went straight up right here. That's probably the worst spot. That's probably the worst spot in the building where we had the most problems. And facing east, the sunlight did more damage than any other area. So I always thought it'd be the west, but it's not. It's the morning sun that does more damage than anything else, so. Then what I did here was, the north and the south walls, the north walls, we haven't had much problem with. Because here, there's not too many north walls in this building. The way north, just one straight wall. And the only other north wall you really have in Mount Standings is right up here. And that's just five foot high, the rest of it's. So, but the only difference is that, you can see on this wall, the walls, this wall goes up against the gym. This is not a load-bearing wall, the steel's going this way. The walls we had problems with is the walls are bent like this and the steel is bearing in here. This roof, only from here to there is bearing in here, and we've had problems with these leaking. The rest of them, the steel goes all the way across, doesn't leak in the walls. So it's kind of interesting. But, so what I did on proposal is getting back to what Luke was saying. It's basically what we have to do is take these three courses of brick out right here, all the way across. So this flashing, basically what I do, you take about eight feet out and leave a foot in, then take eight feet out. And you slide the flashing behind it, cut it in the wall, lay the brick back and just keep stepping all the way around. Or brick or whatever you put back. The problem with this building is when we built it, the mortar in this building was still mixed by hand. So it's five shovels, five shovels, five shovels, bag, which we don't do anymore. So it's really, really hard to match. Now you buy pre-mixed, so I can still buy something mixed close. So what I proposed to do is put this back in a split-faced block material, which is on the lower band of the building. That I can buy the same color, buy the same color mud. The block is still made in the buick and so is the mud. So it's an easier matching, it matches what's down the wall. So instead of trying to get this brick back close, then you're going to have a mortar streak all around the whole building. You can tell wherever it's been patched. Another problem with that too is you can't start and stop. Because if you go to here and start, you can see it from my house, basically, which I wouldn't really like too much. So what this proposal I put together covered a couple of issues for me was, first of all, I wanted to see what was happening in a north wall and a south wall and through an east wall. So I put a proposal together to go up here and fix everything on that side and turn the corner and come this way as far as I needed to see what was going on with the north wall. Get out the south end, turn the corner, so I can see what the flashing was doing on the south wall. Then I can tell what I'm going to have on the whole wall across the gym or this side and that side. So that's what my proposal was. So I knew what was going on two down the road.
So we're talking to Roger today.
Else I got to figure out my worst-case scenario for this because I really don't know what's going on behind the wall. So.
We'll schedule a building grounds meeting, maybe on the twenty-seventh if it works for the people involved in this work.
On the twenty-seventh?
Oh, of, of, I do agree, yeah.
Okay. Then a few more issues I had was, you can see this roof here was ballasted where the rocks holding the roof from coming up, basically. Something we did a lot until four or five years ago now. Almost everything we do now is fully adhered, no rock on the roof. The problem with it is, if you really, really don't watch the rock, it's too sharp, then the roof goes to hell. This guy was really fussy about the rock. He took it all, they had it here once, we made him take it all back, put new stuff back on it because he didn't want that problem. And it worked good because it's twenty-one years, which is very good. One thing the rock does, why they did it before too was to keep the sun rays off the rubber. Now you don't see it very often. I don't know if it's driven because it's hard to find a good rock or, it used to be a weight issue too on the other end. But depends what engineer you talk to. One of the things I had on my list, and I have eighteen different areas, but to get rid of this water problem. I know Roger said somebody did a square on this one time here. What I would do is come out here farther on the roof and put this back. But I guess my question is, is it worth the money to get this up back to fully adhered and go with more insulation? I could go back the way it is as an energy update, but then you're going to spend more money. But down the road is that back? Because if you patch this back in here, and I'm not saying this roof, you know, I've seen them go thirty, thirty-five years out there. But it's pushing the envelope of what you do. You want to spend some money to get this fixed back to here, then go back in five years and tear it back up.
I thought you said the roof was fine.
This is the rubber roof in this area right here.
The rubber roof.
Yep, the metal roof is, we have some spots that control joints and stuff to fix, but not like this. I mean, this is a twenty-year roof, basically. So it's already normal standards, it's outlived its normal life.
So between now and that meeting coming up, Gary, I want you to address all of Roger's concerns with that roof. And what the board decided to do at the last meeting, you said you were going to spec to fix them? And that's what the board is looking for, is to fix all the leaks, all of Roger's concerns with this roof.
And then my recommendations on stuff like this?
Right, right. Bring that to the building grounds committee meeting.
Because I, I don't, I'm going to put a dollar on this both ways. That's, this is the only area that we've ever had a problem with. This was like when the building was ten years old, this was starting to get a problem in here. And they've come out patches before and it still leaks somewhat. In order to fix it, it needs to come up, basically. So that's just a few things that are going to come up in my next, on this one.
Will you talk about installation again?
For higher value in this, I'm not sure what's on here, actually. I'm going to have to really go back and do some digging.
Could you add someone?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's room for it. Actually, what, if some of it would come up, we could get higher and higher value now than what was put on there twenty years ago too. In less ways, you know, if it's worth the dollars and cents on the other end. I know in the elementary school, when they did this, that was a great time to do it. I know I was here at that board meeting and I saw the price that they had and I recommended it because it was a good dollar value. And the roof was at the end of its life cycle. It was still decent in spots, but it was a good time to do it. So as far as this area, then the front entryway, we got the wall issue. And then I guess the only thing that is kind of out in the open is three of these areas of walls, I don't know what's behind it. So I got to kind of figure the worst-case scenario without cutting into it. That's why I put this together with addressing my three worst-case scenarios, so I could find out what's behind it. It's kind of hard to cut a hole in without, you got to do something back.
So with a project like that, Gary, how soon could that take place?
As soon as they get above freezing decent at night, also, this is the biggest problem.
And how long, sheltering, how long are you thinking on that?
To do which part?
Phase one, like you were talking about, the export.
Okay. Highest question, stuff up there, because everything goes in the hallway up the ladder, not the steps.
And these are the things you need to do in order to draw the specs?
Not the specs, it's just the price, because I don't know what's in there. Else you got to figure the worst-case scenario because I have no idea what's behind it, how bad it's going to be to fix it. You know, I'm going to find when I turn on this wall. Now, if you spec replacing all that to the south and you opened up the wall and the flashing was fine, then the same way with the north wall. The only ones I've ever looked at here was, we had one piece on to the front and the flashing was gone. But I've seen it before, like the south walls, you open it up and the flashing looks like the day you put it in. So, depends if the sun got to it or not.
Are you going to write up specs for this so that we can put it out to bid?
Whatever you want.
Hopefully that was the board's direction in the last meeting. And I appreciate your work on putting, they got a proposal for us.
Yeah, because it's, that's what this proposal I put together, I was going to find out what's in south, what's in north, and then fix the east. Well, I was doing it, because I got to, to tear it out and get a look, I got to put it back. I mean, physically, put the flashing back, put the insulation back, put all the mix in there back. Else you got a hole in the wall, of course. So it's like, so that's kind of where I'm at right now.
To Roger's point, a couple of things that he had shared with me this afternoon, his number one priority is actually over the entrance. It's not so much the northwest, and I agree that flashing needs to be replaced. And, you know, if we're digging, if we're opening up the wall, then instead of closing it up and not doing it, that's the time to replace the flashing. You don't wait another ten years and then come back and open it up to replace the flashing. And his point is that the west side isn't encompassed in that. If you replace the flashing on the north, south and east, you might as well do the west at the same time and just keep that course going all the way around. He wanted to have the two rubber areas identified as well as the, over the kitchen area was his other concern. He's got some leaks there, so.
Along with the wall, actually.
Yeah.
Along with the rain gutter on the backside.
Along with the rain gutter on the backside, so.
So what I suggest, Gary, is meet with Roger, go over his list and his concerns. And if you got eighteen things in your list, I'm sure there is. I want, I want all of his concerns identified and addressed.
Yeah.
What about having to tear it apart to inspect it? Now, you're expecting Gary to do that for nothing, or? See, when you were writing this, this time and material thing, you bid everything all your life. You're going to spend a lot more money because you're going to ask Gary, you have to put in whatever he might run into that you aren't sure of. So nine times out of ten, you're spending more money on bids than you will time and material. Because time and material, you only pay for what you have to have done.
This building was built on time and material, right?
I don't remember.
No?
Just, I don't see.
No, I don't.
Yeah, but it wasn't, it seemed so much.
And then moving, thanks, Gary.
Yeah.
And then moving forward to dust collector. Roger has solicited four vendors and, by the twenty-seventh, you'll have four proposals for the dust collector in the heck room.
What day of the week is the twenty-seventh?
I believe it's Monday. That's what Roger suggested. And then here in Luke's safety committee meeting, that's at four thirty, so that may be next Monday. Building grounds committee meeting later.
I may have a conflict, I'll double check. And then I will find a date that works for everybody.
Sure.
There's a choir concert that night, is that a question?
Thank you. Choir concert that night. While we were on the dust collector, Kyle Carey dropped off some pictures for me. His furniture class is up and running and you kind of get a sense because there's light coming through the window of what the dust is like in that room. So I thought I'd just share that because Kyle had dropped it off and said it might be helpful to the board to understand what's happening. It's different when you see it when it's empty and not being used versus when the dust is flying and it kind of gives you a better sense of what we're talking about.
So let's get off the field here.
For a date?
Okay.
Oh, get a date for buildings and grounds, you bet.
Any other questions on facility?
So, to be clear.
There are basketball night, right?
Choir concert, not a basketball game.
He's going to find his triple zero four investigation to us.
No, no, they're a tournament one by then.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a schedule.
Yeah, not a Monday, Monday night would be a tournament.
You haven't approved. I'm paying him to.
To clarify. Yeah, to clarify what I think you're asking is that the direction that we gave Gary and McGuire Construction last meeting was to craft or draft specifications that would fix all the leaks.
Right.
The high school, middle school building, including the gutter system. I think that's something that has been out there. And then those specs would drive a competitive bid solicitation that people could use to take those proposals of how to fix it and put a number on that, so we have an apples-to-apples comparison. Roger's only other piece that he had stated is he doesn't, it's hard to work with contractors that are coming in and out over years. And it's challenging to get these projects done in a finite amount of window of the summer. So you'd prefer to have it all done at once rather than overtime. It's just challenging logistically to stage all of the equipment that goes on to get on and off roofs and so forth. And I personally would be interested too to know what type of warranty or guarantee would be offered with that remedy or solution from each company? Would they guarantee it for one year, three-year warranty to make sure that thirty days after saying, we've got it fixed, it's not still leaking?
Not repaired, or something like that.
Well, he's talking about, if I heard Gary correctly, replacing the rubber, I think he's going to give an alternate to repair it by stopping it with a seam that creates problems. Then you've got the other section that would probably need to be replaced in five or ten years or just doing the entire replacement. And usually when you get into a roof replacement, that's where you bring engineers in. If you're just repairing it, you usually don't.
It used to be five years to new, but replacing it now takes a year. If you just replace it, that may have changed to a year.
All right, employee handbook update?
Before you is Employee Handbook of Proposed Language. This would start next year. It defines the workday for staff or further defines the workday. If you're looking in your board packet, that is fifty-three, thank you. It adds an additional paragraph that further clarifies professional staff. This is really more of a middle school, high school clarification. Currently, teachers work seven periods, one semester, and six periods, another semester. And in that other semester where they're only working six, they have essentially a prep and professional period where the other, they have assigned class or duty. This would level it out and say that a normal school year has six, what I consider core or encore classes. One period that's dedicated to professional time, which is servicing students. And one period that is dedicated to preparatory time, where they can correct papers, use copiers, those kinds of things. It allows us to, and this is the scenario that happened this year, is we had a student that needed some services. It was in a semester that a teacher was only teaching less than the full semester. And because the language wasn't such, it wouldn't have allowed us the opportunity to force that teacher to work with that student in the sixth period of the day or a seventh period of the day. And we wanted the flexibility, the rights to do that, but it also then guarantees teachers a balanced schedule so that they are assigned a seventh period out of an eight-period day, that they would receive overpaid for doing that. So I think it just clarifies better practice. We have done some checking in around our counterparts, other districts, what they do. Some like Pecatonicus schedule their teachers seven periods out of the eight-period day, and that's just all they get. They don't have a professional woman. Others like Highland are more generous and they have five periods out of the day. Dodgeville is a block schedule, so it's not really a true comparable. This is right in the middle of all the districts that we surveyed. And I've worked closely with Kyle Carey and Tom Stager on this language soliciting staff input. So I give this to you for final review and approval if you're ready.
All right, you have a motion?
Right away, how about eight hours per day up there?
It's an eight-period day, so not an eight-hour day, but an eight-period day?
One of the first paragraphs is eight hours that specify the number of hours or days per week. The normal hours for full-time employees and positions authorized as forty hours per week.
Right.
Considered five eight-hour days.
Correct.
And the teachers are professional, they're not covered by the hours, why do you want that in there?
So that you, basically, we standardize the work week as a forty-hour work week, an eight-hour work day.
Then you become liable for overtime.
Not because, it's not because they're certified staff defined by state statute as salaried employees, so they don't have a defined work day. But to try to determine what a normal expectation is for a normal work day and a normal work week would be roughly eight hours a day, forty hours a week. But to your point, they're salaried, so they're not bound to only working eight. Sometimes they will have to work into the evenings with parent-teacher conferences and there won't be additional remuneration for that. Sometimes there'll be staff meetings that might last up to a half hour after school, that we could require them to stay with notice. But we can't just start to say, you're going to start at six and teach kids in the morning and we're going to wrap it. you're gonna start at six and teach kids in the morning, and we're gonna wrap at five. It just, it gives you some sense of clarity around what a normal work day is.
So, you already have this hourly thing in the policy we have now?
This is correct, yes, that's currently in there. It hasn't been a problem for teachers in the past, it just roughly gives you a normal work week.
Well, I had a little labor issue like that several years ago, and I don't know, municipal might be different than.
It is.
The other, because at that time, you could have a salaried employee, but you can, you can, couldn't come up with a hourly rate off of what the salary was and the number of hours of work, and end up getting stuck with overtime. So, my question was, if this was the same or not?
Yeah, to clarify, state statute states that we cannot pay staff that are certified staff an hourly salary. And you're further banned by state statute from paying overtime to a certified staff member. And now, as a bind, would we see hourly and/or overtime? That's your support staff, like clerical and custodian?
Yeah, I understand that well, I just was involved in that some years ago, and I didn't want to get involved again.
Yes.
This line in here about the administration shall make every effort to see that the engine duty responsibilities of teachers are equally shared.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, are you creating a burden on yourself that's gonna be impossible?
This was, um, this was in effort to squelch some teachers' concerns. Uh, this actually was teacher language that was added in, thinking that somebody might get lunch and recess duty, and somebody else has a resource or a study hall, and that that would maybe not be equitable. So, when it all possible, we would balance the number of study halls, so somebody doesn't have just all study halls, and somebody has all resource room, or others. So, in an effort to say, we will try to balance that to the best of our ability, that language was included.
We need a second. To Julie's motion.
I'll stand.
So, this is an update to the employee handbook, would we approve this on an annual basis?
We do, yes, there might be some editorial revisions that come in annually, is dollar amounts change.
When does that typically happen?
Typically happens in July or August.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. One, one post, Lisa. Motion, Carey, six to one. Number six, resolution to support nineteen oh eight.
Uh, this resolution would be in support of a proposed bill that is circulating currently in the legislature. Senator Mark Klein and Representative Novak were here to hear a proposal by the fourth-grade class to consider cheese as the state dairy product. In doing so, it would add the dairy product to the Wisconsin blue book and be recognized as the official dairy product of the state of Wisconsin. This bill has the support of Novak and Mark Klein. We're appreciative of them coming in to hear the proposal. The kids will be up at the Capitol visiting the day, at the Capitol this spring, and will have an other opportunity to connect with their legislatures, or legislators, to continue to push this bill forward, they're really excited about it. If the board would be so kind to adopt that resolution in support of naming cheese as the official dairy product, that would give us more credibility as we work through the legislative process.
I'll make your motion. Motion by Jeff, second, Lisa, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I have both those resolutions to sign.
I don't know what the state inserts, is it a scale or a public beer, or what?
State insert.
I feel like I should know it.
Certainly, it's a big deal for Mineral Point. It's something that.
Milkweed pods, I used to do a milkweed.
Try to be brief on the superintendent's report. As you do see, we are now streaming this tele, this meeting by a telepresence, so we'll have the opportunity to capture eventually what's on the screen, as well as what's happening in the boardroom. So, that's in addition. It also will be able to record the board meeting, so you have not only the face-to-face, but you have the screen, side by side. We'll continue to work through some of our technological understandings on how to make that work seamlessly for our community. There are additional telepresence units throughout the school now. We have a Holocaust survivor that will be working with our middle school unit again, with Ms. Riley, in conjunction with the study in the book nights, and will actually have the chance to witness firsthand and talk to somebody that experienced a concentration camp. The music choir program has a virtual field trip coming up this spring. It's really expanding, it's really neat opportunities, and expanding our educational footprint beyond the walls. If ever interested by the board, we have kids taking Spanish at Riverdale. We have students taking literature courses at Platteville. It's really a neat opportunity to see kids receiving, and hopefully, we'll be sending some course content over the waves soon enough with possibly Mr. Nevers in his music class. He has a master's in music, which is rather a unique thing to carry, and if students from other schools, we've opened it up, would like to join that class, we would also be offering course content that students could get credit from Oshkosh for taking, as well as graduation.
I have a question about the live streaming of the school board meetings. If we want people to come to the meetings, doesn't live streaming sort of make that less likely to happen?
Good question. Can I leave it to the board?
I think most, I mean, maybe, yeah, I would say. Do most communities, a lot of communities around here stream? Nope, Dodgeville has for years and years.
Yeah, for ever.
I just wondered if it's.
I mean, there's some really physically able to attend to for different reasons. I know, like, that people like that, angry at one.
Yeah.
Right, but that, the video, you know, having it videotaped, a lot of people will see it.
I'm just, I don't.
It's a good question.
It may help, but I mean, and it could help, too, if people hear something, you know, and they're watching and think, I'm gonna come in.
I'm gonna run over there.
I'm gonna jog over, see what's. I mean, if we reviewed the agenda and then we made a draft.
Yeah, you could see, like, I was just logged in, and you could see that people logged in, so it's kind of neat.
How many, Joelle?
Well, I just put it out at like three o'clock this afternoon, so there were only three of us, but.
Can you tell how many people watch the videos?
Yeah, you can go, that's all, anybody can tell that on YouTube, if you go click views.
How many, in the past couple of months, watched school board video?
Over.
Just curious.
I gotta get to the channel. The January ninth meeting had a hundred and sixty-one views.
But does that tell you if they're on for three minutes or they're on the down?
You don't know how long they watch.
And, you know, we put, where, when we send out the articles, we put the times of when the certain item is listed there, so they don't have to sift through the whole thing if they go to a certain number. So, I doubt that many people are probably.
Can you get that analytic information from YouTube? I bet you can, and you may, we may have to pay for it, but I bet there's a way that you can look at that.
That one was like five. Two hundred views for the long-term facilities plan. Eighty-one for the fourth-grade state symbol proposal. The candidate forum had four hundred and seventy-five, which is a good tie-in. Next thing, super.
Yeah, we can jump ahead.
Sure.
The, to that point, the candidate forum is scheduled for March fourteenth. That is a Monday, that's where voters can ask questions of the candidates. I just wanted to confirm that Member Kinch and Member Bastin are planning to attend?
March fourteenth is a Tuesday?
Yeah, I'm here.
Tuesday, thank you.
Can you ever just?
Check my calendar, because I thought it was a Monday. Okay, if not, we can look at a different date, because we've got some alternative dates.
Monday would be our meeting, right?
Monday's the meeting.
That's right, thank you. Thank you. So, Monday's our board meeting, this would be Tuesday.
So, to go over the program as we did a year ago, there were questions that were emailed, same questions emailed to every candidate, correct?
I don't know, let's turn that over to Joelle, because I did not have a hand in that.
Yeah, we had, I don't wanna say canned questions, because they were certainly thought out based on current school board issues. And I think the timeframe was to try to keep it under an hour. But really, those were questions, I didn't know how many people were gonna show up, I didn't know if anybody was gonna show up, and I would rather have the constituents ask a lot of questions. So, I think it's important that we talk about some of those questions, and you come prepared and you feel confident, but be prepared to have to think on your feet, too, because you don't know what the audience and the voters are gonna ask. But every person gets the same amount of time, I think it was two minutes per answer. And most people didn't take the full two minutes, if you recall, so I thought it actually went pretty well for our first forum. But we do need to get that date locked in, because that's about less than a month away now, and we need to start publicizing that, so.
And we, Member Thousand, or Candidate Thousand and Candidate Gunlock could attend on the.
Yeah.
Fourteenth, as well as possibly some other dates, so we need to lock down and communicate with our constituency the final date that we decide. Chester Kinch, do you know if you can attend on the fourteenth?
Well, I think you'll have a regular debate, rather than hypothetical questions.
Change the format? What does the board think about changing the format?
Like, what would the format be of the debate you have?
Well, we each say what you're going to do about a certain thing, or whatever, we ask questions. I don't know, I wasn't impressed with the last one.
I think that's kind of what I feel. I think that's kind of the idea, though, I mean, I think we did ask questions about, like, what's your stance on certain things, because I remember some people said, like, I'm not sure, I need more info, you know, I think we did ask those, so. Um, I think we need direction, I mean, I don't want to put people on the spot here, but we're under a month now, so I think we need to.
Get closure on this matter?
Yes.
Anybody else interested in changing the format?
I kind of, I mean, I kind of like the sort of equity of format that it was. I mean, you could heard everybody got the same questions, everybody had the same amount of time. Some people, I guess, took advantage of their time or not, it just depends. So, I kind of like everybody getting at least the opportunity to have the same time to prepare, if they're getting the questions in advance, and then the same time to give their two cents on that particular topic, without making it, I don't know, sort of not civil or something. I mean, I like the civility of what you had last time.
Yeah, and I like you asking the questions, you kept it moving, and you kept it civil, too. And I mean, I guess one would be, what if, you know, people submit their questions in advance to Joelle or something like that?
I think, I think we, I think I numbered it all call out last year, and I don't think I got any, but maybe after the popularity of the last event, we can definitely do that again and get some questions. Jeff, you said every Tuesday night is usually bad for you?
Well, the Tuesday after our board meeting, because that's the board meeting I have at the warehouse.
Oh, okay, so the previous Tuesday would be a thing?
Probably, because I wouldn't have a meeting that day. Just let me, just let me check my calendar tomorrow, if I get that to move.
Angie, if you don't mind putting any to do to just follow up with Member Bastin and Member Kinch, and we'll just make sure your calendars are workable, and we'll get that locked in, then Joelle can go work. Super, the other item on the superintendent's report is the Alternative High School. Uh, had the Wisconsin State Journal come down and take some pictures and do an interview, and I don't know if that, I don't think it's been released yet, I haven't seen it. Have you, do you know a release date for this one?
Um, I went over for when the recorder came last Tuesday, and she usually runs those every Tuesday, so I'm not sure if it's gonna be tomorrow or the week after, I'm not sure. She was also asking, she wants to feature us later in the school year again, too, so about any particular topic. So, I think that's great, that we have working connection with, ideally. Not that we don't value our local weekly.
Right, but it's some, some nice exposure for something that has had a tremendous amount of work in support of Ms. Heisman. Just a quick stats for the board. To date, we've supported nineteen students through the alternative school this year so far. Uh, seven students have completed the program, so they're moving toward graduation. Uh, we anticipate another five students will graduate this year before the end of the year, they're on pace to graduate. Uh, and then these, again, are kids that are at risk for even staying in school, let alone graduating. So, this is pretty exciting numbers. Uh, seven students are not eligible for graduation, there's just not enough credits to graduate. We anticipate five of those students will return in the fall. They account for four of the seats we currently have contracted, there'll be a fifth that is coming onboard. Uh, we have eleven seats that are from other districts, just so you kind of see the variety of where they're coming from. Uh, we've worked with five students so far from Mineral Point, and potentially a sixth before the year is over. The one thing that we're looking at, the data really looks good. I'm excited about the program and to continue it going forward, but we are investigating a location change from the old high school. That facility has served the location well for a while, but there's just some concerns with that facility, that it's just causing us to look at some other locations for an equal amount or less, that would be a little bit more private, and wouldn't necessarily have other traffic coming in and out of the building throughout the day. So, it gives us an opportunity to secure that even further, and make that kind of a unique environment for the kids to really make it feel like it's their own school, rather than a hub of something that's a little bit more busier. So, I'll keep you posted as we continue to investigate other locations around the area, but we'll stay in the greater Mineral Point area for sure, we wouldn't look at moving it down the road. That is the end of the report, anything I can answer for the board?
The meeting date, we're working on the date for Building and Grounds.
Yes.
And then the regular.
And then the regular board meeting would be the fourteenth of March.
And then a motion to adjourn. Lisa, so. Close motion, Carey.
Mary, I need your signature on this resolution.